Education for June 11, 2020 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being streamed live on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. First, I would like to start with a sincere apology to our viewing audience. We are 25 minutes late. We have just had a special meeting to hear a complaint. So again, my apologies for the delay. Many of you have been anticipating this. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to our viewing audience. I think we may have a few people whose phones are not on mute. So if everybody can take a look at that, that would be helpful. Today marks the first day of summer break for our students, as our student representative Maxine was just discussing. We know how difficult it is to end the school year without the opportunity to say goodbye to teachers and friends and students and families, and to walk the halls that final time, probably to throw your papers in the air. But it has been heartening to see so many creative ways that schools and families are marking the end of the year. From promotion ceremonies to visual, our visual arts showcase, which was amazing, drive-by graduations, lawn signs. We love how our community is still finding ways to display our love for school and our fellow students and teachers. Tonight, in addition to approving the superintendent's proposed budget for the 2021 school year, we are also receiving an important update on multi-tiered systems of support and also being asked to approve the master plan for the multiple pathways to graduation building. At this time, the board will vote on our business agenda. Board members, are there any items you would like to pull for discussion?
Director Constance?
Yes.
So, I'm sorry, does somebody else speak up? Or just me?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I didn't have any ones that I want to pull to the end, but I do have a couple of comments when we get it moved and seconded and are ready to vote on it.
Okay, Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So, move.
I believe Director Bailey moves and Director Scott seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda?
So I just have...
Director Bren Edwards?
Yeah, thank you. I just had three items. One, we have actually three advanced optimization contracts. And I just want to note that while we have three, and it seems like we've had an acceleration of them, actually, we're on pace to have about the same as last year. And we have memos for them all, which is part of the contract improvement process that's being implemented by staff. The other issue that I wanted to just flag was the PPS Concordia lease termination. And this is a question for, I believe, Ms. Large. And I had a question from the community because it wasn't completely clear because it was framed as a lease termination. There was a question about the Concordia PPS free-to-PhD partnership. Maybe this is a question actually for Mr. Garcia. And just a confirmation that not only this terminates the lease, but also the free-to-PhD partnership. Because it wasn't entirely clear to the community that this wasn't just a lease termination.
Hi, Director Bren Edwards. This is Jonathan Garcia, Chief Engagement Officer. I also happen to serve as the co-chair of the Free to PhD Initiative at Fabian. What I can say is that the official program or official initiative that is Free to PhD, what is branded Free to PhD is ending per this term, per these terms. However, we are very much looking forward to working with Dr. Williams, the principal at Fabian, to elevate the importance of community schools, which is, which Fabian, as you know, is one of those here in our community. And so we look forward to working with her to grow that community school model there and potentially elsewhere. So again, yes, Free to PhD branded initiative is, for now, ending. And in its place, we're really looking to concentrate our efforts around building that community school model that the community has so envisioned for that community.
So this lease termination, in effect, will have, that it will also address the partnership?
Correct. And part of...
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, and the reason that that is the case, when the founders developed the lease, the term, the lease agreement and the operational agreement, those were intertwined. And so because Concordia has closed, is closing its doors and therefore terminating the lease, essentially by default, maybe that's not the right word, but by default, the, what is Free to PhD is no longer a, an initiative.
Great. Thank you. And then my last just thing I want to note in terms of the contracts is we have a contract for the Office of the General Counsel Network. And that, just note for the record, that the board received a, on previous amendments, received a memo on the structure of this particular engagement. And that's it? Thank you.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6121 through 6127 in the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes. Yes? Yes. Opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? The business, the business agenda is approved by a vote of 7 to 0 with student representative Lateral voting yes. All right, thank you. And Maxine, you are up next. Congratulations, graduate.
Thank you.
Would you like to provide your report?
Yeah, so, wait, can people put themselves on mute? Because I'm hearing myself like four times and I don't know why.
We were clapping.
Oh, okay, that's great. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Um, yeah, so I just wanted, so I graduated, a very cool thing that I did. And I wanted to express my gratitude for PPS for, you know, putting together diploma days and making sure that both high school graduates and middle school graduates are able to celebrate. It was really awesome for myself to have my diploma day and see all my favorite teachers and administrators and for my sister as well, who graduated eighth grade from Sunnyside. And we had a really fun Sunnyside-style celebration at Marshall Campus, doing a little parade and taking over a radio station. It was a really cool experience. And although, you know, it wasn't regular, it was, it was still really great. And it was really fun for me as a high school graduate to, to be able to celebrate this achievement. It's such a big achievement to make it through this many years of education. And even though, also acknowledging like what's going on in our world today, this historic movement that we are all experiencing, it's valid to take time to recognize that, you know, we all did it as graduates. And now it's, it's our time to use those skills that we've been, that we've been given during our public education and change the world, which is super exciting. I also wanted to just commend PPS and especially Guadalupe for making the decision to no longer have SROs in our schools, because that's a very big decision. I do want to say, though, that having this decision be made, you know, and not making this decision sooner brings up that we have, as a, as a district, have kind of messed up by not listening to our students and our families and community members who are most affected by police presence and by SROs in our schools. And by not listening to them, our relationship with them is now strained. As when they reached out to us and expressed their opinion and we had students being engaged, it was like we did not listen. And, you know, now as what the world is saying, we have to start to reimagine what the public education system is going to look out like without that police presence. And before the board meeting, DSC had this conversation, you know, regarding this decision about SROs not being in schools. And students are glad that, that we finally have a decision that's been made and we don't have to keep asking questions about when SROs are not going to be in schools anymore. There's still that question that's in students' minds of like, why hasn't this happened sooner? When students already felt uncomfortable? But instead of looming on those questions that, you know, are, are still in the back of my mind and still in the back of many other people's minds, I can imagine too, I'm looking forward to the future of student leadership within PPS with, with what the DSC has, has become this year, which is such an amazing group of students and only to become so much better with, you know, help from staff and gaining exposure through what work we've done so far. But as these, as these conversations about police presence and about our, the world, the events in our world come up, I just ask that, you know, stay engaged with what students are thinking and are saying. It's, it's so important to listen and to, to just, you know, these are the people that we serve and these are the people who are our future. And, you know, being one of them, it's, it's really stressful to, to see these things happen and, and, you know, think about if they were to happen to people in my schools. Yeah, this is really stressful for me to say, just because I haven't, I don't have all the experience that other students of color, who are students of color who have. I'm just a white chick, who's middle-class white chick. I go to a diverse school and so I, I know people with diverse backgrounds. But I am not one of the students who would be affected by these SROs. And so as an ally, I just want to say thank you for making the decision to not have them in our schools anymore. So that's my, that's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Do you want to say thank you to all the student activists who, who really led that process last spring? I'm sorry, Director DePass.
I'm sorry I cut into you, but I wanted to just tell Maxine how proud I am of her and the job that she's done this year, just showing up, balancing your student, your senior year with, with board service. And you brought up this idea of, you know, I'm just a white chick. But the fact that you kind of come into this, like showing, knowing how you're showing up speaks really highly to your, what you've learned about being a student. I've also been thinking about the student leadership too and wondering if there's some way to recruit leaders of color who might be less, more hesitant to show up and speak. This Tuesday, we heard from an amazing student who's a junior at Jefferson, I think this year going into her senior year, I believe. And, and I would love to see people like her represented on our student council because if we want to see different outcomes, we need to start, we need to have different people making decisions. It'd be great to have a student of color supported and represented, particularly in light of, you know, we're in the post-George Floyd era of leadership. And so one statistic I'll leave you with is that women of, women who run for office need to be asked seven times from various people that they admire to run for office, on average. And so I don't know if you can, I don't know how, how the DSC system works, but if there's anything that you could do to advocate for a, a student of color, to help them develop their leadership, maybe someone that doesn't, you know, come from a middle-class family, that would be really valuable to our work. And, and congratulations, by the way. It's, you've done amazing things this year.
Thank you so much. It definitely, you know, for the future of DSC, as the, I'm, I'm going to be gone, but I'm really hoping that it will expand. And it's really hard to know what DSC is going to look like with COVID going on. But through these conversations around the budget, other students have been engaged. And it's, it's a very valuable, you know, even though the budget, talking about that is a hard conversation too, bringing in those other students from organizations like Multnomah Youth Commission and, you know, with our DSC students doing outreach at their own schools and especially a lot of climate groups that we have in Portland. There are so many students that want to be engaged with PPS. And so I'm, I definitely, you know, want more students of color to share their experiences with, with not only the DSC, but with PPS as a whole, because those are so valuable. And there are so many takeaways from, from those students' experiences. So, yeah.
Chair Constance, can I, sorry.
No.
You may, whenever, whenever it is that you're out, you may.
Thank you. I was going to take a point of privilege as the Chief Engagement Officer. Our team has had the opportunity to work with Maxine over the last year as the student representative. And actually, as I mentioned to Maxine much earlier than that, as she walked the halls of BESC with Nick the year before. And so I really just appreciate Maxine's energy and commitment to our, our schools and our students. And, and she was, she had a huge responsibility, or responsibility, you know, coming to every board meeting and, and, and speaking on behalf of, you know, or for, with, you know, on behalf of 50,000 students who have very different lived experiences, different. And so she, she took that and, and ran with it. And I appreciate her leading, leaning into, understanding her privilege and understanding the role that you can play in that. And then Director DePass, just, you know, part of Maxine's, you know, I would say accomplishments is being able to diversify our DSC. So, you know, our superintendent, this is the first year we've had a student rep manager, if you will, overseeing our DSC. And so Maxine has been working with Dan very closely. So again, just thank Maxine for, for helping us diversify our DSC. We have a lot more to go as, as Maxine and as you suggested. But, you know, but just appreciate our students really raising the bar for us as adults. So thank you, Maxine.
Thank you. And, and we will have one more opportunity to thank Maxine. One more meeting.
Yeah.
Two weeks.
This is my last one. Nuts, but yeah.
We're going to miss you.
So this is the last one? Or it's not?
Next, next, on the 23rd is my next, my last one. I am looking forward to having regular meals on Tuesdays, though.
Me too.
I miss, but it's okay. You, you've still got some time, Amy.
All right. Thank you so much, Maxine.
Hey, Maxine. Loose thread via the Youth Commission. I met with them, oh God, two years ago, and they were trying to push for a later opening for high school students. Do you know if that has gone anywhere?
We met with them multiple times this year. Do you want to talk about this off, off-board meetings, Scott?
Sure.
Okay, great. Let's talk about it later this week or something.
Okay, that'd be great.
Awesome.
All right. Superintendent Goretto. Interested.
Michelle, I'll loop you into that, too.
Would you like to provide your report to the board?
I would love to. Good evening, Chair Constance and Directors, and good evening to everybody who's watching from home on our livestream. So let's go to the next slide, if we can get that on the screen. So I'd like to start tonight by, of course, congratulating also our Portland Public Schools graduates. So the PPS class of 2020, it's been affected by this COVID-19 pandemic in some really unique ways. The milestones, the traditions that might have been expected were impacted and affected. And they, and they finished their PPS careers under circumstances unlike any other graduating class that preceded them. So I've been amazed by our students' flexibility throughout the spring. I was delighted to hear about seniors participating in the virtual prom we hosted last week. And yesterday marked the last diploma day of 2020, where schools welcomed back seniors back to campus to receive their diplomas to be celebrated in, in a way that allowed for, of course, some, some appropriate health and safety practices. We're grateful for how schools and our school leaders adapted to make sure that our graduates would have this moment to be celebrated by families and friends. So graduates can look forward to virtual programs being made available next week. And I know that senior class videos are being put together now. And we will remember this unique class of 2020 forever. I also want to extend and share two personal congratulations first. We've already started here roasting Maxine a little bit, but to, to our dear student representative, Maxine Lateral, thank you for playing the very important role of raising student voice, something we're going to stay committed to being better about, listening to youth about these real-world issues. And secondly, like many district staff that are also parents and have children celebrating this same important milestone, personal point of privilege, I also want to wish a happy graduation to my daughter, Liliana Guerrero. I'm sure she's not watching her father at work tonight, but she also had her senior year disrupted and graduation not take place the way she imagined. I want to wish a bright future to all of our graduates as you embark on your next chapter and journey. Next slide. So I think I speak for all of us when I say that a big part of moving through the challenges of the past three months has been about holding on to those moments of joy where we have a privilege to witness and experience our students. Those moments now include this past Tuesday evening's livestream showcase of our talented PPS students and visual and performing arts teachers who provided performances and was hosted by Artslandia. I know many of you joined me in watching and commenting during the livestream and really delighting in the performances that spanned across grade levels, schools, and arts disciplines. In fact, so many of us joined in on the fun that Artslandia reported we crashed their computer servers. But they were quick to adapt and in keeping with the theme of the spring, the show went on as planned, and if you missed it live, you can still watch it on YouTube. So my thanks to all of our student artists, our incredible arts educators, and to Kristen Brason and our incredibly small but mighty Vapatin, who helped put this show together in the face of losing over 150 typical spring arts performances that would have occurred across our schools this spring. Our visual and performing arts team, and they're in collaboration with Artslandia, found a way, a creative way, to honor and celebrate the incredible passion of our young student artists across the district. Thank you. And next slide. So one of the entrees on tonight's menu, our staff recently submitted a full-budget proposal to the board, like other districts, and it was pre-pandemic, so therefore not reflective of the new economic realities and shortfalls. The exercise we're working at now involves amendments that will surely need to be considered later. And PPS is, is running ahead of schedule relative to, to many of our neighbors. We staff has worked feverishly to address what started out as a massive $57 million budget gap. And I think we've made great progress in closing that down to about $12 million in reductions. That's focused as much as possible from impacting classrooms and direct services to students. My teams continue to examine every available source of funds to protect services to students. Later in the agenda, we're going to share with you a bit more about the iterative process of getting to a final budget for the 2020-21 school year. And I want to reiterate these points. We've reduced a potentially devastating $57 million in budget cuts to $12 million and probably $10 million now with some further proactive cost-saving measures and labor collaboration, even in just the last few days. And secondly, and importantly, we're staying true to our racial equity agenda. And we'll hold harmless the students and the schools who most need our support. So budgeting is only going to be more challenging a year from now in the new biennium. I think everybody understands that. I know that we're committed to staying true to racial equity and social justice in easy budget years. We also have to be committed to those values of difficult ones. We cannot continue to protect a status quo in our, in our budgets when we expect results to accelerate and improve for every one of our students, especially our Black and Native American students. So despite the massive budget gap, after much work over the course of many weeks, we have been able to restore some tentative reductions in a few areas, again, prioritizing direct services to students. And given some unanticipated revenue by identifying additional cost savings and incorporating further management-level reductions into the new fiscal year, as a result of those actions, we're able to ensure funding to include restoration of the third day of general education PE in a limited number of elementary schools, where there was an initial proposed reduction to the level of service there. Of course, that's assuming a traditional school opening and schedule in September. And then secondly, the restoration of every one of our adapted PE teachers in the district. So I wanted to, I wanted to mention those two items in particular because I know that this will be welcome positive news to many of our educators and families. Rather amazingly, I think we've been able to contend with this massive budget hit caused by severely declining state revenues, by acting strategically and with urgency, all in the attempt to preserve our ability to deliver on our stated theory of action, minimizing employee impacts and minimizing the degree that, of potential layoffs that there would have been at a rather unthinkable level when we initially began this work. And I also want to say upfront that I want to thank the CBRC for their work and report, who also worked under a very truncated timeline, just like the board, just like staff. I appreciated the, the very thoughtful, deep, challenging questions and the conversation we had last week in, in the CBRC meeting about our strategic priorities and our aligned investment plan, which you've been sharing and discussing with the board as well. And our next slide. Finally, I know that families are eager to know what fall is going to look like at PPS. Yesterday marked the last day of the school year like no other in the history of PPS. I'm really grateful for the patience, the understanding, the flexibility of our students, families, educators, administrators, and staff that they've shown and demonstrated over the last three months. District staff has been working and planning for the 2020 to 21 fall opening since March. We're busy mapping out multiple scenarios for the fall reopening of school, given the number of variables at stake and the fact that situations could change suddenly over the summer. We are now working urgently and in collaboration with other large Oregon districts to reconcile the Department of Education's guidance, which was just released yesterday, with our own draft plans and capabilities. So we expect very soon here, probably in the coming week, that we'll be reaching out directly to students, educators, and families to ask for their input, their preferences, their comfort level related to various possible school opening scenarios. So please look for an upcoming message from us as your perspective is going to be critical as we continue to plan for the fall and attempt to finalize what that's going to look like. So thank you in advance for that. And then last slide. I, I want to acknowledge all our youth and community members who are making their voices heard at this time, that Black Lives Matter. Our school district's vision is very clear, that our charge is to ensure our students are prepared to lead change and improve the world. You heard Maxine describe that a few minutes ago. That we proceed with the core value of racial equity and social justice, that our graduates become transformative racial equity leaders. Their actors, I, I think we're already seeing evidence of this. That concludes my opening remarks for the night, for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Goretto. Next, we will move on to public comment from, and student comments. Before we begin the comment period, I'd like to quickly review our guidelines for public comment. The board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to us. We value public input as it informs our work. We value public input as it informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. If you're watching our board meeting via the livestream while waiting, please make sure that you mute prior to your turn to speak. If you leave it on, it will create feedback and you will be muted by the meeting administrator and will come back to you. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak, and then we'll hear a sound, which means it's time to conclude your comments. And we appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment this evening?
Yes. We have Camila Arz. Camila, you are muted.
Hello?
Camila?
My name is Camila A-R-Z-E. Thank you for your work around the budget and focusing on our students of color. As a Latina and working at teacher, I want to share the work that Black folks, Black students have been doing. In 2017, they wrote demands for our school and district. They stated, "We are not high school students asking for simple changes. We are Black people demanding these necessities in order to survive." I'm here to amplify some of these necessities. Demand number one, hire more Black teachers. Why do our students have to fight to be on interview panels for teachers and administrators? Why do they have to fight to have questions about Black Lives Matter be a part of interviews? We also need to fight to retain Black teachers that we have. For six years, I have seen Black teachers pushed out of buildings. They are asked to speak for their race, heavily relied on to create sports that support such affinity circles, and in the worst moments, asked to validate their presence in a white-dominated building. Our senior inquiry students stress the need for administrators and staff to be trained in deconstructing their whiteness and white fragility. This is imperative if we have a chance of keeping our Black teachers. And based on the last board meeting, where the one Black board member was told pleas without adequate resolution, I think some board members might need it too. Demand number two, mandate Black History and Ethnic Studies. We cannot leave liberatory education and Black Lives Matter to a high school elective. It is tragic that when I asked my 11th grade Ethnic Studies students if they can name any Black changemakers other than Rosa Parks or Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I met with silence. If we expand that narrative, it empowers Black students to see themselves as changemakers and to see Black excellence woven to the fabric of our society, not just in social studies classes. From what I've seen of the GBC so far, we need to do better. Demand number three, end zero tolerance now. Funding culturally responsive support is just the beginning. We also need to address the actively racist policies by holding administrators and teachers accountable for the way their racial biases show up in exclusion rates. We are operating in an educational system and school district that allows for students to be expendable. We cannot continue to feed the school-to-prison pipeline. Fun counselors, not classes, demand number four. I want to thank you Superintendent Guerrero for finally doing the right thing. But when you said the time is now, it was a slap in the face of those who pleaded and organized and testified for years. We were well past the time, and I wonder why you couldn't make that same as last year when students were here. Students deserve proactive leadership, not just leadership in the face of national crises. I'm tired of seeing our students of color in this district testify in front of the board, be met with smiles and applause and no follow-up. I'm tired of our students committing hours of emotional labor without seeing systemic change. I'm tired of having only one or two Black teachers at our school. I'm tired of seeing Roosevelt students on the PPS website without credit, reference, or action on their needs. And if I'm tired, I know my Black colleagues are exhausted. And if they're exhausted, our Black students are hanging on by a thread. Actives do not need a statement of solidarity, and they don't need white tears from administrators or teachers. They need real change now. The lack of urgency in our district speaks volumes. If you are not actively dismantling racist and inequitable systems, if you are not actively working on these demands, you are perpetuating racism and inequity. I urge you all to do something to be anti-racist, because students and teachers of color are tired of doing that work for you.
Thank you. I didn't get your name, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw?
Yes. We have Ann Huang. Ann, you should be unmuted now.
Yes, my name is Ann Huang, A-N-N-G. My daughter Camille is a fifth grader in PPS. Thank you for hearing my public comments. Tonight, you are going to see a presentation about multi-tiered systems of support and review the budget. Recent events have highlighted the importance of every voice in addressing systemic racism. I want to voice my support for the board's revision of the student conduct and discipline policy, including multi-tiered systems of support as a budget priority. My daughter is a student of color, and the disparity in suspension and expulsion rates for non-white students is particularly alarming to me. Last year, her elementary school suspended or expelled Black or mixed-race students at a rate of 5.8, 12.1 times more than the general student population respectively, according to your own published data. This is discouraging to say the least. For all students, research shows that restorative justice and trauma-informed practices reduce behavior incidents as well as the need for suspension or expulsion. I ask that you eliminate suspensions and expulsions for pay-through-five students altogether as these children are in a critical time of needing behavior modification support. For all age groups, I ask you to commit to investing in counseling, social work, and teacher training rather than policing Brown and Black students out of our lives. While we face unprecedented adjustments to school life and a decrease in budget resources, I urge you not to lose sight of the human faces of children who deserve equitable access to learning and a safe place to exist. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have further public comment?
Yes. Alicia Blackford. You should be unmuted.
My name is Alicia B-L-A-C-K-F-O-R-D. I teach at Madison High School, and I would love to talk to the board about listening to Black and Brown voices. When the superintendent tweeted last Thursday about removing SROs from our schools, he said, "The time is now." No, Mr. Guerrero, the time has long passed. Black students have been coming before this board, sharing their lived experience and demanding removal of SROs since 2016. I'm extremely happy that armed officers will no longer be fixtures in our schools, and let's call this decision what it was, reactionary. Thanks. It's great to react now. We have to react now. And the reaction every single one of us in this school district has to take is to go back and listen to what our Black students, staff, and families have been demanding all along and finally start acting. This largely non-Black school board and district administration has continually made it difficult for Black students and Black community members to have a voice, and then largely ignored their voices. How many Black students, educators, and community members came before you and implored you to keep Rosa Parks year-round schedule? What was your vote? How many Black students came before you to explain the importance of restorative justice to their school experience? What did you do with our contract with Resolutions Northwest? How many Black voices have demanded not only the recruitment but the retention of Black teachers? What are our numbers? How do our Black staff and buildings feel? The superintendent tweeted on Friday that he agreed with Joanne Hardison 100% when she said that, quote, "Now's our time to undo this historic discrimination and all the racially unjust policies that we have. We have to take this opportunity to fundamentally change. No more lip service to equality," end quote. He said that he looks forward to enacting the changes that our young people seek. Well, we know what changes our young people seek because they've been telling us. They've been organizing community events and coming before this board and telling you. If you're going to finally react to what is happening in our streets, then let's do it. Show us that you have finally heard what our Black students, staff, and families have been telling you, and stop giving lip service to equality. We have the chance to go beyond just removing SROs from our schools. We have the opportunity for our schools to be models of what abolition and investment in restorative and community-based practice can look like. I'm here to repeat the demands of our Black students, staff, and families that you have been ignoring for years. One, fully fund restorative structures and training led by people of color. Two, mandate Ethnic Studies in every subject and at every grade level. Three, give Rosa Parks their year-round schedule back. And four, lead the work to change our buildings into a place that Black folks can actually see themselves wanting to work in so that we can truly recruit and retrain, retain Black teachers. This work needs to be decisive, led by Black folks, guided by student voice, transparent, and it needs to begin immediately. Transparency means that we will admit and repair the harm this district has inflicted and continues to inflict on our Black communities. It means centering and giving power to the communities that have been doing the equity work for us. It means giving time in each board meeting and each email from the superintendent for updates on what work is being done. This is a critical moment in history, and while I wish I could say I worked in a district that started the revolution, at least let me say that my district followed through with the revolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bradshaw?
Ken Gadbo. Ken, you should be unmuted.
Great, thank you. My name is Ken Gadbo, G-A-D, and David, D-A-D, and Boy, O-W. I have 15 years teaching Social Studies in Portland Public Schools. I teach U.S. history, criminal justice, and I am the sponsor of Madison High School's Restorative Justice Club. I'm also the father of two teenagers, one of whom will be a senior at Madison next year, and the other of whom will be a freshman. I'm dedicated to the Madison community and the Portland Public Schools. I'm also white, cisgender, middle-class, middle-aged, able-bodied, Native English-speaking, and male. I am aware, to the ever-evolving extent that I am able, of the privilege and responsibility of those labels. I'm going to say some things that are not necessarily my own ideas, but because I know that as a 45-year-old white man, when they come out of my mouth, they're given certain consideration that youth, women, trans folks, and people of color are all too often not afforded. School is not fair. It's not equitable, and it's not accountable. At its genesis, it was not designed to be, and in spite of the tremendous efforts of the advocates and allies that have come before us, as well as the ones here this evening, school continues to be a place of violence for so many young people, particularly our Black, Brown, and Native students. We need to look no further than our graduation rates, our suspension rates, and our incarceration rates for evidence. So how do we capitalize on this moment to do what's right? What structures can we change to make school more equitable and more accountable? For my students and many of my colleagues at Madison, Roosevelt, and Jefferson, I have heard some common themes. Students need dedicated spaces and times within the school schedule to have their voices heard and taken seriously. Every PPS student deserves to have a staff member that is knowledgeable about their strengths and struggles. Every student needs an advocate. Students need mechanisms with which they can hold us teachers accountable. Students need equitable grading practices. Students deserve a course load and daily schedule that is navigable and appropriate even when life is unpredictable. And finally, students deserve to have teachers and administrators that look like them. As the state and district look to reconvene school in the fall in a way that is responsible to the current crises, I ask the board to prioritize these structural changes that support our students' voices. It is not a lack of desire or skill on the part of students of color to express their ideas. It is regular, hyper-local, predictable, prioritized access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jaclyn Bovie. Jaclyn, you're unmuted. Jaclyn?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, can I start now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jaclyn Bovie, E-O-V-E-E. I'm an English language development teacher at Jefferson High School. I am happy to see that the district is focusing on the budget as not simply a list of numbers, but as a moral document. I appreciate you all naming some of the student groups that the district has mis-served, especially Black and Native students. And I'm grateful to all the people who have joined tonight to raise up the demands of Black folks in particular. At the same time, that doesn't mean that we can put any less focus on other mis-served racial groups, such as Latinx students, Pacific Islander students, and Middle Eastern and North African students, just to name a few. I'm specifically here to bring attention and focus to English language learners of all different races across the district who need a lot more attention than they are getting right now. The need to focus on English language learners, or ELLs, is especially relevant in this moment as we face the challenges of distance learning. ELLs not only must contend with language barriers between themselves and the educators who are paid to serve them, but also many face substantial technological barriers. I've heard many teachers talk about being impressed by students' tech skills, often noting sheepishly that students know more about computers than they do. However, this is not true of all of our students. Many of my ELLs at Jefferson, particularly newcomers and students with interrupted formal education, have never before been taught foundational technology skills that we tend to assume all students have. This is just one of countless examples where the unique experiences of ELLs are misunderstood. When we neglect to center the experiences of English language learners, we poke more holes in the fabric of our school system for our kids to fall through. In PPS, we love to talk about student voice, but we miss hearing many students' voices because we do not provide adequate access for them to share their thoughts with us, especially when those thoughts are in a language other than English. In this vein, translation and interpretation services must be at the top of the priority list for our district and school budget. It can never be an afterthought. In the last week, I've watched and read multiple presentations about the budget, and the only time that I saw the work we do with ELLs specifically highlighted was in a slide that said, quote, "Resource the Refresh of New English as a Second Language Curriculum," unquote. I honestly have no idea what "resource the refresh" means, but I hope that it does not mean pouring more money into expensive curricula written and sold by private companies. Instead, it must mean supporting deeper collaboration between educators across the district, teachers, social workers, bilingual and multilingual EAs, our partner organizations like ERCO, FCI, and Latino Network, who already know what we can do to better support our students. It must mean providing our students and families with greater access to share their voices with us directly through prioritizing interpretation and translation services in every budget area. It must be leaning in and listening more closely in all different languages to the experiences of each of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all that we have at this time.
Okay. Director Moore? Director Moore, I'd like to call on you. I know you have a resolution that you wanted to bring forward to the board that pertains to many of the comments that we just heard, as well as Representative Lateral's comments on the school resource officers.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. It's, I typically have technical issues. Yes, I'd like to offer a resolution in support of re-centering the PPS student experience through supportive and affirming people, culture, and climate. And I think it's important for the board to kind of speak to the moment. And I'm hoping that some of the thoughts that I put in this will resonate with you all and that we'll be able to make this statement to our students and families and communities. So it's fairly long, so please bear with me. Public education is the bedrock of American democracy as it provides opportunities for everyone to transcend their circumstances. As the public educational system for almost 50,000 students, Portland Public Schools is the steward of this city's future and is responsible for providing a well-rounded, community-centered education that allows every student to achieve their fullest potential and thrive into adulthood. In 2011, the PPS Board of Education adopted the racial educational equity policy, which states, quote, "The Board of Education for Portland Public Schools is committed to the success of every student in each of our schools." The mission of Portland Public Schools is that by the end of elementary, middle, and high school, every student by name will meet or exceed academic standards and will be fully prepared to make productive life decisions. We believe that every student has the potential to achieve, and it is the responsibility of our school district to give each student the opportunity and support to meet his or her... the opportunity and support to meet his or her highest potential," unquote. In 2019, thousands of students, families, staff, partners, and members of the community helped Portland Public Schools formalize an ambitious vision for that education. It summons PPS to transform into a system grounded in our core value of racial equity and social justice that would equip students to, quote, "lead change and improve the world," unquote, by nurturing both their intellectual curiosity and their humanity in supportive, engaging learning environments. Since its adoption by the board in June 2019, that community-driven vision of Portland Public Schools reimagined has guided the district's efforts to improve its performance in service to our students and families. As elected representatives in our community, the Board of Education is the steward of our collective vision. We acknowledge that our district's persistent failure to serve Black students betrays our aspirations. Our collective responsibility is to uphold our commitment to center the experience of students in everything we do, to interrogate our decisions through racial equity and social justice lens, to build authentic collaborative partnerships with our students, our families, our employees, and the larger community. We must lead with integrity and boldness to fulfill this community's vision of what PPS can and should be. It is therefore incumbent upon us at this moment of national reckoning to clarify where we stand and what we intend to do. We affirm that Black Lives Matter. We choose to be a community that not only expresses but also lives a commitment to every person's fundamental right to human dignity. We believe that students, families, and communities have a right to respect safety and full access to schools that prepare students to be agents of change in their own lives and in the world. We commit to eliminating the racism and oppression embedded in PPS and rebuilding it as an educational system that affirms positive identities, nurtures a sense of belonging, and promotes the joy of learning. We will act to make schools welcoming learning environments that employ practices that are developmentally appropriate, trauma-informed, culturally responsive, and aligned with the principles of restorative justice. We support the superintendent's overarching strategic framework of targeted universalism, pursuing universal goals through strategies that are targeted, based upon how different groups are situated within structures, culture, and across geographies. Accordingly, the board confirms its four goals for universally improving educational outcomes that specifically focus on improving academic growth of student groups that the district has persistently failed, Black and Native American students. A growing body of research on the impact of the physical and emotional well-being of students on their academic outcomes and personal development reinforces the notion that PPS has a primary obligation to provide school environments that are healthy, affirming, and conducive to learning. But 18 months of consultation with many hundreds of students in high schools and middle schools reveals that an overwhelming number of students, particularly students of color, expressed a profound sense of insecurity and fear over the presence of armed police in schools, a sentiment toward law enforcement that is generally expressed across the country by Black, Native, and communities of color. We support the superintendent's decision to end the presence of school resource officers in schools, and will work with our community to ensure our students, especially our Black and Native students, attend schools where they feel a strong sense of safety and belonging. Institutions, especially Portland Public Schools, have a moment, an opportunity to lead, not with race-neutral plans, but with an anti-racist agenda that begins and amplifies an intergenerational healing process among students, their families, and our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the Portland Public Schools Board declares that the lives of Black students and our Black community matter, and commits to working with the superintendent to create the conditions for every student, especially our Black and Indigenous students who experience the greatest challenges, to realize the vision of the graduate portrait. Strongly upholds the superintendent's charge to re-center its自身的sense of belonging and safety by encouraging positive relationships and a supportive and affirming culture and climate in every school. Endorses the superintendent's decision to immediately discontinue the regular presence of school resource officers on Portland Public Schools' school campuses. Commands the superintendent and the district leadership for its bold commitment to center the lived experiences of our students and apply a racial equity and social justice lens to all decisions, and directs the superintendent to continue to work at building meaningful relationships with our students, families, racial equity and social justice, community-based partners, labor leaders, and school-based staff to collectively dismantle systems of oppression that hurt our school communities, especially our students, families, and staff of color. Directs the superintendent to provide regular public updates to the school board on the progress made towards implementing the charge to school district leaders on June 4, 2020, to create and support a firm school climate characterized by positive adult-student relationships, student sense of belonging, cultural responsiveness, and overall student's physical and emotional safety. Recognizes that the decision to end the SRO program within Portland Public Schools presents an opportunity to reform the relationship between Black, Indigenous, and communities of color with law enforcement. Ending the SRO program does not speak to anyone specific school resource officer, anyone incident or issue on school campuses. Instead, it speaks to the systemic racism that has plagued our institutions since their founding. The school board expresses gratitude to the school resource officers who have worked hard to build deep and positive relationships with our students, and encourages the Portland Police Bureau to leverage the type of training, supports, and skills of these SROs to help build a strong, community-focused police force. Our students, especially our students of color, demand it. Welcomes Portland Mayor Ted Wheeler, the Portland City Council, and the Portland Police Bureau to engage in authentic conversations with our students, school district leaders, leaders of color, and other key stakeholders to develop racial equity-aligned, actionable steps for reforms in local law enforcement. That's it. Thank you for indulging me, the long recitation. I apologize for getting this to you pretty late in the day, so I would welcome any comments or suggestions or questions.
I think you're offering this as a resolution, so I'd like to ask for a motion to put this resolution on the table.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second it. Director DePass moves, and Director Constan seconds motion. Do we have some discussion?
I just want to thank the people that spoke up tonight. We heard pretty strongly from all of the speakers that they want to see real change around our racial equity work, and not just a recitation of the rhetoric, but a demand for real action, for changing the way things have gone for years and years, and so I appreciate that. I too am feeling a sense of urgency around this work, not just because we're in a post-George Floyd time, which is impactful, but because for my entire life, I've been, and I and my parents and my grandparents have been asking for this, and so the SROs being, you know, out of our schools is a great thing. It's a start, and it's demonstrable, and we have to do so much better in every other way. I feel like the community here in Portland is ready to talk about real solutions. That means doing business not as usual. That means not falling back on the way we've always done things because that hasn't worked for everybody. I'm excited about it and also cautious. I want to, you know, I know we're all, I think we're all moving in the same direction, but just want to, like, put an exclamation mark on that, on that resolution, and that I'm committed to doing this work and have been for, I'm 59, I will say 50 years, and we'll work with the district to see those outcomes. I mean, the rhetoric is one thing. Seeing a 95% and 98% graduation rate for all of our students is another, and I hope that we're all committed to focusing our work on Black students specifically, being comfortable with saying the word "Black students," and understanding that when we talk about Black students, we're using that term as a proxy for all of our students, but recognizing that we need to focus our attention on the very Black and Native students that we're intentionally not serving, and that those benefits will trickle up to all students. So thank you, Rita, Director Moore, for your work on this. I didn't see it until very late today, but I'm fully supportive.
Thank you, Director DePass. Any further comment?
Yeah, this is Julia. So my question is, is this on the district webpage? I'm sorry, I'm a visual learner, and you read it very well, Director Moore, but is it posted somewhere? I just want to know if the district webpage is going to find it.
It's not posted. It was sent in an email to you this afternoon.
Okay. I wasn't sure if it had changed since then.
No.
Okay. It would be great if we had it posted because I think it's a big manifesto, and again, I'm a visual learner, so I'm just thinking back to the verbal rendition, and I think that you've captured, I think, the collective spirit of the work that most of us, that all of us have said that we're committed to. I'm trying to think, and I had the language in front of me, of like, how we link it to actual action. I know there's the piece about getting reports, but I feel that, just having been around PPS for 30 years, that, you know, I believe many people are well-intentioned, but we need to make sure that we link it with action, because I don't want a year from now it to be that we committed ourselves, our hearts and our minds, but then there's not action behind it. So I just want to make sure that we have something that acknowledges that this will be actually linked to actions, data, and like, robust conversations about our work and how it plays out. And I'm just going to go back to the very start, Rita, of, so that's one, you know, how do we for sure link it to action so the community can hold us accountable? Because they can't hold us accountable just for good intentions, but they can hold us accountable for what action we take. And then the second piece, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to add that I can, I will pledge to work with Director Moore and Superintendent, if you could make Danny Ledesma available to help us in this effort. We can, just like with all of our board goals, we can pull out some specific accountability metrics there and calendar them and align them with our board work so that we actually can report back to the board about when we will be, you know, checking in on these accountability metrics.
Actually, what I would suggest is that be a full board discussion, because I know that Director DePass, for example, raised in the past, getting just some baseline data around recruitment, retention, and hiring. And so I think that would be a great discussion for the full board, because then we all are, will be in agreement on what the action looks like. And the really specific point, and Rita, I think it was, like, in the first resolved, it talks about the board working with the superintendent, and it seemed like it should be the board, the superintendent, and the broader PPS community, not just the board working with the superintendent. But again, I don't have the language in front of me, so that would be one suggestion I would make.
I want to say one more thing, and that's a couple of weeks ago, we had a conversation about safety, and I shared that we should be mindful about the word "safety" because that word means different things to different communities. And so I'm really grateful that we are expanding our own use of the word "safety" to encompass safety for Black and Brown students, and recognizing how they show up in spaces that haven't been safe for them ever, and we're expecting their brains to be open to learning, and they're coming in like scared animals, and from fear, from not being safe, and just out in society, and so I'm really grateful for that. And I also think, yes, I mean, we're talking about racial equity and how it ends up within our system with students and teachers and administrators, but we could also go kind of upstream and look at our operations and HR, you know, how are we recruiting teachers and administrators that are from Black, Indigenous, communities of color? How can we report out on the data that we need when we're doing these bond projects? How do we know what the percentage of minority and women-owned contractors is that are working on these projects? What we know when we hire minority and women-owned contractors is that those dollars stay in the community for longer, which helps our community overall for longer, right? Our dollars aren't going out of state. And so I feel like this is a really great opportunity, and I'm also very interested and will have a keen ear towards watching what's beyond the rhetoric and holding, you know, my own self accountable for paying attention.
Founder Cup, go ahead, Scott.
Director DePass, we do, actually, our Office of School Modernization regularly reports and has metrics around the contracting contractors owned by women and people of color. So that's there, and we do a reasonably good job of hitting our inspiration, or being free for our aspirations.
I have any idea what our aspiration rate is. I have a really good idea what it is for the city of Portland and for Metro, but I don't know what it is for PPS. I'd like to know what the number is. There is an actual number, like, it's sometimes it's 18%, and that's a nuanced number, but do you have any idea offhand what our goal is?
Dan, I'll let you answer that question. It's on our dashboard for our quarterly reports.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Dan Young, Chief Operating Officer. 18% is the right. That is our target for all of our projects, over $100,000. I believe it's the same as the city of Portland, but it may have changed over the years.
Thank you.
So I think we're hearing that we, in addition to acting on this resolution that you brought forward tonight, Director Moore, we're hearing that we're going, we need to have more discussion around how we're going to own it, so to speak, how we're going to engage the community, how we're going to engage our students, and how we're going to create some tangible accountability metrics to back up our expression of commitment. So we will, I'll, we'll work together as a board to, for the next, figure out the next time we revisit this issue and try to get down to brass tacks on some accountability metrics. And Ms. Ledesma, can we, Superintendent, can we count on some assistance from Danny Ledesma in this effort?
Staff is available to support the board as it desires.
Chair Constan, can I make one more point?
Certainly.
As one of the senior people around, I was on a Close the Achievement Gap District Task Force in, like, 2002 as a parent, and it became quickly apparent it was just an exercise, nothing serious was going to happen with it. And I want to contrast that with the strategic plan in process that the superintendent presented and staff presented two weeks ago, week and a half ago, led off with community engagement, and specifically with our communities of color. So, and the budget that we're going to talk about in a bit certainly is equity through and through in terms of how we're spending our dollars. So just in that almost 20-year period of seeing a lot of rhetoric, look at the budget. look at the budget, and look at those communication lines and that kind of community engagement. And that's where you see if we're actually doing what we promised to do.
Can I just say one final word? I'm not, I'm not bringing this forth thinking that just by casting, you know, a two and a half page manifesto, we can say we're, you know, we fixed it. It is all about what we do now. But I do think it is important to, to say things out loud that we, we have a moment now where I think it's important for people to articulate where they stand. So, I wrote it in that sense. But yes, I mean, in my mind, this is a, this is a call to action. And I think the first action we can take is later on tonight when we talk about the budget. Because it is, what we do day to day is what is going to bring these pretty words to life or not. So I think it's up to all of us to, to really commit ourselves to bringing to life the vision that we talk about all the time. And I'm, I'm pleased to say that I, I believe we, we finally have an administration that is dedicated all day, every day to doing right by kids and living up to the rhetoric. And I'm happy, happy to be a part of it. So anyway, I offer it not as a solution to anything, but as just kind of a manifesto of this is what we stand for.
So Director Constan, I have a small amendment to suggest. I now have one in front of me. And I don't know if everybody else has it in there, but it is-
It is posted now.
Okay, great, thank you Roseanne. In the first resolve, it says therefore be resolved that the Portland Public Schools Board declares lives of Black students and our Black community matter and commits to working with the superintendent to create. And I would just suggest that after superintendent, we say, and the Portland school community, or the Portland community, so that it's brought, so that it's not just, there's going to be eight of us, or the board just working with the superintendent, that it has a broader engagement.
Ms. Large, can we embed that as a friendly amendment?
With no objection, I think you can treat it as a friendly amendment.
All right, consider it done.
Thank you.
Thank you Director Brim Edwards. All in favor of endorsing this resolution, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Student Representative Lateral?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you Director Moore, and to be continued.
Chair Constan?
Yes.
Directors, you know, every day I wake up as a person of color. And I've dedicated my entire career to living and working, serving all students, children and youth, especially students of color who haven't been served well in public education. And I've done that in two urban cores in the country. And for the last 10 years, on an almost weekly basis, I've spent an evening listening to boards of education conduct their business, introduce resolutions, and I've heard hundreds of them. But there are very few that I can count, that I can think of that attempt to do what I just heard Director Moore just state. And I just want to state that I appreciate and commend putting that stake in the ground, and I think the board should take the time to be really clear about what it's committing to, because what I heard is a desire to proceed with a clear mandate and a racial equity agenda. And that's going to require political will. And for those that have been paying attention, we've initiated a racial equity and social justice framework. We've talked about accountability goals, to place students of color at the barometer. In some ways, we've been working really hard to create a functioning learning organization that would be ready to start to do the kind of work that is going to be required to actually create the counter narrative for students of color while serving everyone. And I think that's the notion behind Targeted Universal that we need to continue to have a lot of dialogue about. And so I do hope the directors do take this as a meaningful exercise because it communicates a lot to educators and to the community, and especially to those that have been disenfranchised. So, I know they're listening. I can tell you right now, my antennas are way up listening. And I'd love to stay, I'd love to step on the gas pedal. It is time to stop sort of tinkering around the edges. Our students have been waiting, our communities have been waiting for a long time. And I, it wasn't sort of, it wasn't just a cliche thing to say, are we committed and ready to becoming a premier school district? This is an opportunity and a moment in time, and sometimes we're not ready to hear our students because they have crystal balls and vision that we're a little more dense about hearing. But we, we've had some unique opportunities recently. We're able to make, despite cuts, and I'm glad our CBRC members are listening, to really start thinking about student support and affirmation in a different way. It doesn't require armed officers in our hallways. We'll let you know when we need you. And so, I appreciate the effort and the commitment. And I don't think we need another layer of work per se because I think that should be captured in our emergent strategic plan and the system shifts that we say we want to make. And we've always committed to becoming more balanced about the performance indicators that we want to report on, on a quarterly and annual basis. So, let's do that work, and let's capture it through the vehicles that are intended to spell out what our district improvement, what our system changes are going to look like. So, I appreciate the conversation. I hope it's not, I've, I've had the chance to witness a lot of board meetings over the years that we not get bogged down in sort of overly processing what I think is intended to be just a clear statement about the commitment and willingness to get started in really doing this work. So, thank you.
Can I just say one more thing? I'm sorry, keep jumping in, but I think that's my job. I, I want us to recognize that we're doing this work that's so amazing in the context of a state that has a very bad history around Black and Brown people. And so, we're going to be facing some difficult conversations probably, especially we're going to be talking about the budget later this evening. And we're going to be talking about resources, resourcing communities that we don't and have not resourced before. And sometimes that feels a little funny. But I just, I'm going to invite everybody to step into that discomfort because it is business not as usual when we center outcomes for Black and Brown students. And, and just, just to be okay with that discomfort when we're doing this change management process at the district level, it does feel, it does feel different. None of us have experience, if you've been in Portland long enough, resourcing anything that's Black or Brown led. And so it feels different, and it's okay, it's going to be uncomfortable, and we need to do it anyway. So, that's my, I'll shut up.
Michelle, I think those comments are so important as we lead into our budget discussion because there is no mistaking this budget and this budget process as a fairly radical document, and certainly an anti-racist document in centering our resource allocation, in the board centering our board goals on the achievement of our Black and Native students. So, I will move us along so that we can get to the meat of that conversation, but I just wanted to recognize that Superintendent, that, you know, the values and the direction expressed in the budget proposal are absolutely aligned with this conversation. All right, speaking of those efforts, the next item on our agenda is a deep dive into-
Did we vote?
Oh no, we have not voted, thank you very much Rita. Yes, we did vote. We did vote, we did vote.
Okay, sorry.
Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this next item on our multi-tiered systems of support, which is an important component of what we've just been discussing as well?
Absolutely, because I think when we support our students well and when they attend to their unique needs and affirms their identities, then we can place the focus on our core mission of educating them. So, I know that we have a number of our talented staff ready to describe for you an update on where we are with our district-wide efforts around the multi-tiered system of support. But I'm going to let Chief of Student Support Services Brenda Martin set up the volume vault for the team.
Thank you Superintendent, and thank you, excuse me, Board of Directors. I think that tonight's discussion and tonight's presentation on, excuse me, multi-tiered systems of support is a perfect tie-in because multi-tiered systems of support really does align with our vision, our strategic plan, and our theory of action. And I would like to start with our theory of action. It says, "If we braid racial equity and social justice strategies into our instructional core, work with our students, teachers, and content, and build our organizational color and culture and capacity to create a strong foundation to support every student, then we will reimagine Portland Public Schools to ensure that every student, especially our Black and our Native American students, realize the vision of the graduate portrait." And that is, that is huge. That's what, that's what we need to do. We need to take action. I think the Superintendent, when he got here a few years ago and hired me into this position, it was my charge to create a multi-tiered system of support department. And this tiered support system is critical to providing that first good teaching, that good first teaching in our classrooms for all of our students, especially our Black and our Native students. We must have a system to meet students where they are, both academically, behaviorally, emotionally, and provide those tiered supports and interventions as needed in order to move our students from tiers two and three back down to tier one. Additionally, our Black and Brown students continue to be excluded at disproportionate rates. We must work differently to keep all of our students in school. Thank you Roseanne. So as you can see on the PowerPoint, this is an overview of our pyramid and what MTSS oversees. So, we really look at our academic and climate structures through a tier one support first, and that is universal teaching. It's all students, all settings being preventative and proactive. Then we move into our tier two, which is our smaller groups of students to provide intervention and supports, and then we finally move into tier three. The rest of my staff will be talking about those tiered supports, how we provide fidelity implementation tools in our schools, how we partner with our Office of Teaching and Learning for those academic supports in tier one, two, and three. How we also braid our racial equity and social justice practices into our MTSS system of support. We also look through a trauma-informed lens, and we provide restorative justice practices. We do all of this to promote school climate, a sense of belonging for our students. And, and when we are able to engage all of our students, specifically our Black and our Native students, we will increase academics and social emotional, pro-social behaviors for all of our students. And so with that, I am going to introduce Shandra Cooper. She is our Senior Director for MTSS. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you Brenda. I appreciate the opportunity this evening to be able to introduce my team. We have Shar Hudson with us, who is our Restorative Justice Manager. We also have Naomi Montalongo with us, who is a program and manager for MTSS, I'm sorry, program administrator. And then we also invited Myrna Menyose, who is the Principal at Riggler. So right now, I'm going to actually turn it over to Naomi, who's going to share a little bit of the overview and structure for our department.
Roseanne, can you move it to the next slide, please? Thank you. Is Naomi on mute?
Naomi, are you there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. All right, good evening, and thank you again for having us on the agenda tonight. I'm Naomi Montalongo, one of the program administrators in the MTSS department. And to start with, with a quick overview of our current structure in this department, you will see the breadth of MTSS work district-wide. Beginning on the left, you'll see the Restorative Justice Program Manager and three RJ specialists. And you're going to hear a lot more about their powerful work later in this presentation. Next, you see there are currently 10 MTSS teachers on special assignment or TOSSAs that are each assigned to support between eight to 10 schools in both climate and academic systems and supports. In addition, there are two MTSS TOSSAs who specifically support the use of the Fidelity Implementation Tool, or FIT, across all schools in the district. And we'll also briefly look at what the FIT provides for schools and the district on a later slide. And finally, the MTSS department also has the District Student Conduct Coordinator, who supports and advises schools in the district, as well as the District Expulsion Officers and that process. Next slide, please. To give a picture of what our TOSSA support in schools, the 10 MTSS TOSSAs who directly support schools have a broad set of responsibilities and duties. They must have expertise in both academic and climate systems as well as in providing professional development in many settings. As seen in the first column, TOSSAs work directly with schools around specific team structures, and those are critical to best meeting the needs of all students. TOSSAs can support instructional leadership teams with processes for creating a clear mission and vision, creating master schedules, and co-facilitating the Fidelity Implementation Tool and using that data for school improvement. Student intervention teams are supported with the Process and Organization for Tiered Interventions for both academics and behavior. And climate teams are supported with data collection through the Culturally Responsive Tiered Fidelity Inventory, or CRTFI. They're supported in using the Racial Equity and Social Justice lens in developing school-wide climate action plans and continued strengthening of positive behavior intervention and support. And finally, they also support the improvement of Professional Learning Communities, or PLCs, at the building level. PLCs, at the building level. The second column describes the areas in which MTSS TOSSAs provide professional development at various levels. At the district level, district-wide, TOSSAs provide support for the MTSS Coaching Academies, and you're going to hear more about that in a bit as well. They also develop and provide district-wide professional development on many topics, and those, some of those are listed here, including their functional behavioral assessments and behavior support plans, student intervention teams, again, PBIS, effective classroom practices, job alikes for school climate specialists, and also MTSS 101. At the school level, they work closely with each of their building administrators and their teams to develop and provide personalized professional development at staff meetings. And at the teacher level, TOSSAs can provide classroom coaching, as well as direct grade-level PLC support. The final column on this page is an overview of some of the work that MTSS TOSSAs do to support system development, and this includes continued research on best practices, racial equity and social justice alignment within MTSS, further development of PD opportunities, and cross-department alignment and collaboration. Through the next slide. So the MTSS Department supports individual schools and the use of a variety of data tools to collect data related to MTSS, including survey data and the CRTFI, which is a self-assessment that focuses deeply on climate. And in addition, the Fidelity Implementation Tool, or FIT, is being used district-wide as an evidence-based tool that measures the extent to which a school implements MTSS for equity-based education. The FIT was implemented last school year with all of the CSI, TSI, and Title I schools, and this school year, it was used district-wide for all schools. This particular graph shows baseline FIT data for all schools, half of which was collected in the spring of last school year and the other half in the fall of this school year. The items along the bottom of this graph show the features that are reviewed using the FIT, and then schools are provided with individual reports to inform school improvement planning. This tool is not meant as an evaluation. The intent is to measure growth over time as schools implement the features of MTSS. Now, with the school closure due to COVID-19, the second set of FIT data that would have been collected this spring is pending. And of course, if you're interested in looking more into the domains and features of the FIT, I encourage you to visit the MTSS webpage on the PPS website, where you can find more information on this and other MTSS reports. Now, I would like to pass this along to Shar Hudson.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, PPS community, and Superintendent Guerrero. I'm Shar Hudson, the Program Manager for Restorative Justice in Portland Public Schools. I'm honored to support students, school staff, and the PPS community. The roots of restorative justice, also known as RJ, stem from practices of indigenous people of North America, Africa, South America, and New Zealand. RJ is about building, maintaining, and repairing relationships to form healthy, supportive, reflective, and inclusive communities. RJ provides support for schools to maintain those healthy relationships and encourages equitable access to a culturally relevant and meaningful education. What is true about restorative justice is that unlike a typical discipline program, it is not a cookie-cutter system with set steps to follow in every incident. When done thoughtfully and with meaning, schools that put restorative justice into practice and approach RJ holistically, looking at how we are building relationships with our students, how we are preventing wrongdoing, as much as how to address it when it occurs, they will see a shift in school culture. Next slide, please. As a team of four mighty restorative justice RJ specialists, and I love my team, we have Sarah Home, who works with K-5 and K-8 schools, Keela Tilery, who works with middle schools and some K-5 schools, and Jasmine Spring, who works with K-5 and K-8 schools. And although I'm the Program Manager, I still do direct services, and I work with and support high schools. In the 2018-2019 school year, our objective was to provide restorative justice practices to all 91 PPS schools who requested an RJ process or needed staff training. However, as a small team of four, that sometime resulted in us over-promising and under-delivering. For the 2019-2020 school year, we all redesigned our school support approach by identifying focus and responsive schools. With our current model, we work with focused schools to build a multi-year, district-wide implementation of restorative justice practices. Focused schools are intentionally building a restorative community with the commitment from school administration. Some of the ways we support our focused schools are providing onsite training for staff, supporting school teams and teachers with community-building circles, working side-by-side with student success advocates, our school site RJ coordinators and other support staff, giving guidance and assistance, and working toward responding and repairing harm. We support our responsive schools by providing a Google screening tool used to request RJ services on an as-needed basis. To give an example, Sarah supports 29 schools. Seven schools are focus sites, and 22 schools are responsive sites. Every week, Sarah visits half of her focused schools in order to fill the needs of each site. She also communicates with her responsive schools when a request for a RJ process or onsite staff training is needed, and she responds immediately when a racially charged incident occurs in our district. The RJ team values the importance of collaboration and community building. The most effective way for us to do this is with cross-departmental collaboration. We partnered with Dani LaDesma and Jonathan Garcia in the 1819 school year to co-create the student engagement conversations using a restorative lens, as well as visiting schools to listen to students share their thoughts about the placement of SROs in school campuses. We are committed to disrupting implicit and explicit biases using both the racial equity and social justice lens and a RJ lens. When conducting school-wide and our district-wide training, we use data to show racial disparities, disparities regarding LGBTQIA students and students with disability, so that staff and climate teams become aware of the harms to their students. We work with James Ludlin and Mila Rodriguez-Sadir with Student Success and Health in regards to escalating conflicts and supporting students and families of color and responding to hate discriminatory events. RJ team conducts a RJ process in classrooms and with small groups after a mental health crisis. And our team has supported students and families after incidents where drugs or alcohol were involved. We support the rapid respond team when requested to help teachers strengthen relationships with students. We are available to support students at Student Success Center before, during, and after the student's time at SSC. RJ specialists support reentry meetings, processing the events with the community and preparing for the student's reentry back into the community. We have Assistant Dana Reimer, Student Discipline Coordinator, to conduct both students and family listening sessions in regards to the discipline policies and changes to the student handbook using our restorative focus. Next slide, please. Restorative Practices uses Tier One for prevention measures and tiers two and three for intervention measures. The goal is to use the first implementation year to build Tier One practices with the focus on building relationships, using community-building circles, having restorative conversations, and providing RJ training and education. When used as an intervention measure, a restorative approach to discipline changes the fundamental questions that are asked when a behavioral incident occurs. I've listed the practices for each tier, but for the sake of time given to me, I will not go into definition. However, I will direct you to review the resources we shared with you in our Google Drive. Next slide, please. We offer district-wide training for PPS staff throughout the school year. The school year, this school year, we had 120 PPS staff attend our Tier One Introduction to Restorative Justice training. That included 31 school teams and seven district staff. We had 42 PPS staff attend our Tier Two Harm and Conflict Training, and that included 21 school teams and three district staff. And then we had two school administrators and eight climate team specialists and our deans who attended our reentry and conference training. We had smaller numbers in attendance this year with our Tier Three training due to the capacity to fund substitute coverage, and our numbers were impacted because of the last three training sessions being canceled due to COVID-19. However, the RJ team is looking forward to expanding the training opportunities for restorative justice next school year. As I close, I ask you to take a moment. Think of the impact of COVID-19 on our community. Families are out of work, or other families are working twice as hard as essential workers. COVID-19 brought to the surface many racial, social, and economic injustice in our world and within our district, from the lack of access to food for some families to the lack of access to the internet and technology devices. We have all watched the demonstrators protest for Black Lives Matter, as we witnessed the murder of George Floyd, the lynching of Ahmaud Arbery, and the execution of Breonna Taylor. My hope is to see the commitment to expanding restorative practices throughout our district, making it a mandated practice, in order to repair harm and truly build schools to be community hubs where every individual is celebrated and empowered to be their true authentic selves. The city of Portland and Portland Public Schools need healing during and after the pandemic, and restorative justice is the most authentic way to achieve healing as we move forward with our new normal. Restorative justice is not a program. It's who we are. It's how we show up every day to impact the lives of our students and school communities. We would love the opportunity to come back to present to the Board of Directors the importance of implementing restorative justice district-wide, how we can move, how we can move the work forward, building and adapting policies to shift from a historically punitive discipline to a restorative, community-based, and responsive school system. Thank you. I'll now give this over to our next speaker.
Thank you, Shar. That's going to be a hard one to follow. Next slide, please. So Myrna and I are going to close the presentation with a brief update on our MTSS trainings up to date. Actually, Roseanne, can you go back one more? Thank you. So as you may know, we do have a contract with SolutionTree and a partnership as well. We have been very fortunate to have secured three very highly effective trainers and consultants who we work very closely with. We have a three-year implementation training plan. Our first year of training actually began last year in 2018, 2019, and it was intentional that we started with all of our district leaders, including central office administrators, all of our building administrators, and then we were also able to offer two days of training for all of our district TOSSAs, coaches, and mentors. So the trainings last year really did emphasize the why and the research that supports MTSS implementation, and it was also important that we established a common vision, a common understanding, and language around MTSS before we began the training at our school sites. So then this year, 2019, 2020, was actually our second year of the training plan, and we were able to start with our school teams this year. It was important to the senior leaders that we did not extend the training longer than two years for our school teams. So in order to do this, we divided our district into two cohorts. Cohort One includes all of our CSI, TSI, and Title schools, plus we have eight more schools that were either in those regions, or they requested to be a part of Cohort One, and this made up about 41 schools who went through our training this year. And then this upcoming year, 2020, 2021, will be our third year of training, and that will be all of our remaining schools for Cohort Two. Next slide, please. So this slide is a visual to help show the structure of our training and how we were able to divide our 41 schools into three different groups. This also allowed us to have three different trainers, and it gave us an opportunity to provide differentiation so that we could have all of our middle school and high schools together. So you can see in Group A, that's all of our middle school and high schools. And so their trainer, Luis Cruz, was actually specializes in secondary education. Our sessions are actually called Coaching Academies, and they're scheduled in three two-day sessions for a total of six days. So each school that you see on the slide brought a team of six, which included the building principal, and then the principals did have flexibility on who their team was that they brought to the trainings, but most of our principals brought their instructional leadership team. So the concept of our Coaching Academy is really similar to a trainer-of-trainer model, where school teams will attend the two-day session, and then they are expected to go back to their buildings, apply content learned, as well as share the content with the larger staff before returning for the second two-day session. So you can see by the scheduled training days at the top of each group that the sessions were scheduled four to six weeks apart, which was intentional to allow time to go back and apply. The MTSS team also attended these sessions. You can see towards the bottom of the slide, the MTSS TOSA Teacher on Special Assignment is assigned to their schools, and they actually attend the sessions with their schools. Naomi and I also attended the, all of the sessions for all of the groups. And so with that, we were able to create summary slide decks after each of the two-day sessions, and these summary slide decks were really intended for the school teams to go back and use the slide deck with their larger staff. We just realized that when teams come together for two full days of content, it wouldn't be realistic for them to go back and try to replicate those two days with their staff. So the summary slide decks that we've created are actually in 90-minute modules to be able to fit into staff meetings. So lastly, if you look at the bottom, you will see the outcomes or the focus for each of the days and sessions. It was a priority that we were able to customize the content with SolutionTree and working with our consultants, so that the work that has already been done in PPS, especially around the GVC and standard-based instruction, was aligned, and that these MTSS trainings really continued to reinforce and build upon the work that Dr. Valentino and the OTL team has been rolling out for PPS. So as Naomi shared, we were not able to administer the FIT assessment, the Fidelity Implementation Tool, this spring with these schools due to the extended school closure, which is unfortunate because this would have been our first year of growth data or implementation data. However, I can share with you that we do provide a survey or an exit ticket after each day and each session, and I can tell you right now that 100% of the schools in Cohort One that you see on this slide are reporting to have regularly PLCs, professional learning communities, scheduled on a regular basis. So that is a huge win for us. PLCs are a significant component of MTSS and of our training. So with that, I'm actually going to turn this over to Myrna, who has attended our trainings, and she's going to talk a little bit about the MTSS work at Riggler.
Evening, Board. What a pleasure to be here. It is my first time addressing you, so I am excited. Evening, Board. What a pleasure to be here. It is my first time addressing you, so I am excited. And I'm excited to share with you what this training did for our team. So the very first time we did the training during the eighteen, nineteen school year, it was after Janelle Keating came to talk to us. She kind of talked about how important it was for kids not to be pulled out of their main class in order to get their interventions. And it was, it kind of like, was like, hmm, oh, yeah. Like, if I'm getting pulled out of math to do reading, how do I do this? So the first step that Ethan and I, my AP and I, took was to make a schedule that had additional time and support for every grade level of at least twenty minutes. And then in that schedule, what we created was the opportunity for the ELD teacher that was assigned to that grade level to be able to push in and do interventions, the SPED teacher that was assigned to that grade level to go in and do push interventions. Our intervention is to be able to do push-in interventions. So it was, it was our first try, and we made lots of mistakes in that, but it was kind of how we're arriving at a refined understanding of what Tier Two supports are and what Tier Three supports are. And it also brought our whole staff together in agreement about the fact that Tier Two needs to kind of be handled by the classroom teacher, and then Tier Three needs to be an outside source that's closely documenting and closely checking in on interventions with kids. So it really ended up getting us pretty far this year. The other thing that happened is this last year, we've, our Session Two was all about PLCs, and it had my whole instructional leadership team just super excited because we had PLCs at our school, but they weren't feeling like we were doing enough work in them. They weren't like meaty enough. They didn't have data. They weren't an inquiry. They weren't brought up by teachers. And what happened is after we had the big session with Brian Butler, I was in Group C, then we came back as a cohort, because I'm, I'm in a cohort that has a senior director for just the nine of our schools. So also, I've gotten the opportunity to see how this tiering support works as a system, right? Because I'm getting the tiered support. I'm definitely feeling the love and excited this year about what is possible for my students. But anyway, in that little group, we delved deeply into what a PLC should look like and the structure it should have. And I immediately stepped back and thought, oh, goodness, that's not what we're doing. So we, I have an amazing team of teachers at Riggler. If you have not been there, you have to come check us out. But we agreed that one person per grade level would come out and do a full-day training about what it was to be the PLC leader. And I added links on here. If somebody could help me click on the Kindergarten PLC five-five link. I'm particularly proud of what's happening now because what's happened is my teachers are leading their PLC. And then it's a data-based PLC, so when they go look, if, if we don't have time to do it now, you can do it later. But if you go look at that PLC, there's actually data that we looked at. We first agreed, what is our biggest concern during this pandemic with students? And it was engagement, right? So then we went right to engagement, and we said, where do we want to analyze our engagement? In Google Chat or on the platform? And we agreed Google Chat. So we took careful data about who was engaging and who was not engaging, and we were able to see pretty clearly, like, who the kids were that needed Tier Three interventions, which while we're online, was me giving the family a call to find out what was happening, what was needed. If you could scroll up, please, I could show you where to click so people can see the data. But this is just an example of our, an agenda that one of the PLC leads created. And if we scroll down on it, there's a link to the data that we created. But it's basically the attendance for Google and then a plan for what are we gonna do for the kids that, you know, that, that were able to engage at core? What are we gonna do with the kids that need a little more? And what are we doing for the kids that are not engaging at all? So you can go look through this later if you want to. I just wanted you to have an example of what that looks like, of what it means for us to have like a meaty PLC. It's database. We're discussing solutions and who's doing what on a team. The other thing I linked on here for you to review was how it changed our direction, our, of our, of our whole team as a leadership team. So I shared the leadership team agenda that now regularly starts in our school with looking at which three parts of our PPS vision our teachers all hooked into and felt like were essential for our school. And it was in, I think it was Day Three of Brian Butler's piece, that we talked about what leadership is meant for, like making the big umbrella. And then we went back and redid our vision, and it truly made a difference for us. I also linked in where our tiering work has taken us during this pandemic. I feel like that training was essential in helping prepare us to be powerful teachers with data while away from the kids as a team. So that last sheet, if you go look, is just a tiering of like, who needs what and in what order, in what area? Is it in, in hyper, in distance learning engagement? Is it in math that people need more support? And in closing, I wanted to be a little bit of a show-off and show you what we're able to produce with a base like this. So if, if somebody can help me click on that fifty-seven, two dots, fifty-three, and go to that part of the video, it's the thirty-second moment in time from yesterday's fifth-grade promotion that kind of shows you like how we're delivering our mission in supporting all students via our work. So it looks like nobody can click on that, but later, if you want, go click on it. Go to that second and be ready to be impressed with what we're creating, bilingual, bicultural, confident, strong students that know that they matter. Thank you so much. Brenda, I believe I'm handing it back to you.
Thank you, Myrna. Thank you, Shandra, and Naomi, and Shar. I know that we went over a little bit, but we're very excited about this work, and we really appreciate you taking the time to listen. I think that this is a perfect example of ways that we are leading, doing the work of our racial equity and social justice and weaving that into action. So thank you very much, and, and that's it.
Thank you, Brenda. This is, this is Rita. I am stepping in. Director Konstam had to step away to deal with a family emergency. So I wanna open the floor to board members. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, this is Director Bailey. And I, I know it's, one of the outcomes, I think, that we're seeking from this, one, that was incredible presentation. And there's, from all of you, and there's, I look forward to more conversations and diving into all the stuff on the webpage, too, because there's, there's, there's a lot of, you presented some pretty high-level stuff that I want to dive into personally and figure out more. One of the outcomes we're looking for is an authentic reduction in suspensions and expulsions to be replaced by restorative justices, restorative justice and processes. So it's exciting to see that we're building that framework and implementing that framework, and great work is being done. Do we, and again, a cultural shift takes time. Do we have recent data? Of course, this year, it's kind of crazy, but with suspensions and expulsions and the disparity.
Yes. So.
Is that on our website?
Last year's data is on our website. We're mandated by law by June thirtieth of every year to post our, our suspension expulsion data on our website. We are beginning to do a crosswalk between all of our schools who have received the Cohort One MTSS training and discipline referrals, and then also in regards to special ed referrals and the level of implementation within our schools using the FIT Assessment Tool to kind of guide our learning. And so unfortunately, we weren't able to get the full year of data. So we're trying now to, to compare apples to apples and just go from September to January. And so we're having to personally, individually manipulate the data. But that, that is, that's, the proof is in the pudding, right? And so, so that's what we need to do. We need to keep our students in school, specifically our Black and Brown students, more specifically, our boys of color. We also need to reduce our special ed referrals. And, and so there's a ton of research that supports MTSS, and that is, that is our goal and our plan.
Okay, great. And Myrna, I was glad to hear about that structured intervention period so that it's not interfering with the regular day. That's actually a similar structure we kicked around a couple of years ago, and as we, for middle schools, to do that same kind of thing, where students would have a shortened period every day where they could either go to an intervention where they're catching up or go to an enrichment and, and do both of those during, during a week. So that's, that's a pretty neat little intervention you did there.
And if I could just jump in, this is not a question so much as a comment. So I, I had an opportunity last October to visit Riggler and spend part of the day with Principal Munoz and just see, and if I'm remembering right, this was actually, we, we actually were talking through, you were talking through with some of the specialists who were sort of designing the curriculum and actually addressing this issue, how do we, how do we get this training to teachers? So it was, for me, it was great to just sort of see that, that process. And it's, it's really amazing to sort of see this presentation and, and the outcome. So, so thank you very much for that work, and it was really a great presentation and really exciting. Thank you.
You, thanks also for coming to Riggler. It's nice to see you guys.
I would love to come back.
Yeah, I think we're all totally missing school visits, which was really key to us getting on-the-ground information. The other piece I want to ask the team is, again, thinking of us as a learning organization. And you mentioned one of the feedbacks you get, you got was that hundred percent, yeah, we're, we're trying to implement this. What's the other methods of feedback that you get to say, yes, teachers are integrating this, staff are integrating this into the day-to-day work of the school?
Shandra, would you like to answer that?
Maybe we've got a couple of answers from, or one from each of your team members.
Oh, sure. So if you remember, Brenda, sharing, our department really oversees all of the school climate and PBIS and discipline and referrals, as well as the academic. So on the academic side, we are looking at that FIT, as we talked about the FIT Assessment. And so right now, we have the baseline, but we'll have our one year of growth data next year. Besides the academic, or besides the FIT, we also rely fairly heavily on those survey, survey and exit tickets because it's a team of six that's completing them. So it's not just the building principal, or it's not just one person from that school. So it's fairly reliable. On the school climate side, we also oversee the successful school survey, so we use that data pretty heavily to look at how that can inform school climate plans, as well as the Culture Responsive Tiered Fidelity Inventory, which is also a school climate assessment that we use. So with all of that data, it kind of helps us inform not only where schools need support, but how we can also tailor our professional development to help schools. We are really looking forward to having that FIT Assessment and to have that data because that will be the beginning of showing our implementation growth.
And one, one reason we hired the superintendent was because during an interview, he showed us this incredible display of a data dashboard that just knocked our socks off. And I can, I look forward to seeing us build that dashboard that would include your work and make that transparent publicly available so we can see exactly the kind of progress we're making in transforming this district per Director Moore's manifesto, which is now my manifesto, too, since I voted for it.
Thank you so much. We've been waiting for that deep dive into all the work that's been going on with MTSS. Do we have any further discussion, board members, before we move on?
No, just that I appreciate the presentation, and now I want to go to Riggler, too.
This is.
We'd like to have you come anytime.
I can't wait.
If you're nice, you'll get a T-shirt.
Well, you know, I'll go anywhere for a T-shirt. So I, I will say, even though we haven't, we're not in the school at Riggler, I think your presentation really captured the energy and the passion and the depth of the work that's happening at Riggler, so thank you. I think in a virtual environment, it was almost like being there at the school. So thanks for that. I want to go back to.
I just want to say, it's inspiring to work with people like you, so it's why I'm passionate. I'm glad I got to come on this particular night. Thank you for the opportunity.
The other question I had was just about the restorative justice slides that were presented. And, you know, in some ways, it, while we didn't know the resolution was gonna be brought before us tonight and the whole conversation about action, not just words, the restorative justice presentation really, I think, fits nicely into our future-facing and our action-oriented. And I think as a, as a parent, and then also looking just at the discipline and then how police interact sometimes with our students, that this restorative justice piece, which de-escalates and gives our students and our staff other tools to really approach any challenging environments in our school in a very different way than we traditionally have approached them. So I just wanted to say to the team, I'm really excited. I'm gonna be interested in how, how it gets rolled out so that everywhere in our, in our district that we all have, that's anchoring our work. And I really applaud the, Brenda, you and your entire team and everybody who presented tonight in sort of leading the way and sort of our new, our new practices, especially as we sort of closed the door on some practices that we've had historically for a long time, school resource officers and sort of engagement with law enforcement and pivoting forward. So thanks for the presentation. I really look forward to how it's going to continue to cascade out into the district.
Thank you, directors. We really appreciate the feedback. And I do want to let you know that the superintendent with our reduced SIA funds has still prioritized an additional restorative justice specialist. So we will be adding another FTE of an RJ specialist for next fall. So it's really awesome to have that addition and to be led by Shar and Shandra. So, so thank you.
That's great to know. And with that, I think I'll move us closer to our discussion of the budget. Director Moore, we're going to leapfrog the items, the policy items, and get back to them at the end of the evening, if that's all right with you, and move on to ask for our report from our Community Budget Review Committee. Every year, the Board of Education appoints a Community Budget Review Committee to assist in the annual budget process, and they're important partners in this process. The CBRC is tasked with reviewing, evaluating, and making recommendations to the board regarding the superintendent's proposed budget and any other budgetary issues the CBRC or the board identify. CBRC also monitors and advises the board on the allocation and expenditure of local option levy funds. Tonight, we'll hear a report. Um, tonight, we'll hear a report from committee co-chairs Thomas Lanham and Sarah Kerr. I also want to thank um Board Director Lowry for her work as our board representative on the CBRC. Sarah and Thomas, welcome.
Great. Thank you. Can you all see and hear me?
We can.
Excellent. Uh, thanks, thanks so much. Um, so good evening. Uh, for those of you who don't uh yet know me, my name is Sarah Kerr, and I've had the privilege of co-chairing uh the uh Community Budget Review Committee uh this year as well as the year prior. Uh, importantly, I'm also a PPS parent of a rising second grader at Rose City Park Elementary. Uh, and so it's uh great to be here with you in my capacity as a CBRC member and as a PPS community member. I really appreciate the opportunity. Uh, before I turn things over to Thomas to begin to step us through the report, I wanted to take just a few minutes to express our gratitude to you all, the Board of Directors, to Superintendent Guerrero, um to the PPS finance staff team in particular this year for their incredibly hard work. Um, it's been uh, I feel like the word complex is an understatement. It's been a really complex and difficult budget year um and just climate in general. And so I I'd like to particularly appreciate the that team, Deputy Superintendent Hertz, uh CFO Cynthia La and their teams for supporting us while also juggling the really difficult work of developing a budget in this climate and supporting the entire PPS staff to really support the immediate needs of students and and their families um during this, you know, COVID related school closures and all of the impact it's had on our students. Um, I'd also like to appreciate Director Lowry for her support of us uh in our committee. And finally, would like to appreciate my fellow CBRC members, um including Thomas, my co-chair, uh many of whom are with us this evening um virtually. Uh, I'd also like to acknowledge upfront our committee's uh deep appreciation of PPS's centering of the proposed budget on our shared, our community's shared principles of racial equity and social justice. I know this has come up many times in conversation this evening, and I just want to underscore our committee's appreciation and recognition of that, uh particularly given this moment of both incredible sorrow, I would say, and hope for our black community members and all community members of color. Um, we share your urgency, uh PPS and and board in passing a budget that lifts up the voices of uh of our underserved students and communities and really centers on them. So thank you for that as well. Um, and then finally, uh, I'd really like to borrow uh Maxine's words from earlier and just recognize that I too am just a middle class white chick. Um, and I I think I'd be remiss not to take this opportunity to note to the board and those listening in tonight, um, that communities of color continue to be underrepresented on our committee, on the CBRC, and I don't think that's okay. Um, and I think that black lives matter and black voices matter and that we need more of them on this committee uh moving forward. And um I felt important to underscore that in light of all of the conversations in the moment we find ourselves in. And so without further ado, I will turn things over to uh Thomas to step us through the uh beginning of our report to you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sarah. My name is Thomas Lanham. I'm a co-chair of the CBRC. You've already covered the purpose of the CBRC, so I'm I'm just going to step through uh some limitations uh that we encountered while we while we worked through the budget with uh finance staff. Um, the focus of our review, uh some observations that we have. Then I'll turn it back over to Sarah for recommendations. And then we'll come back and talk about the operating levy, which is the second piece of what we uh are charged with doing. So the FY 2021 budget review process was incredibly challenging. I think you all know that. Our report reflects the snapshot as of June eighth, three days ago, which feels like three years ago, frankly. There were significant limitations around our ability to provide a comprehensive report and recommendations to the board. Um, first, the budget itself is a reflection of pre-COVID revenue assumptions uh and is therefore overstated by tens of millions of dollars. Uh, second, the budget includes general fund cuts of over $12 million, seven million of which are to central services and five million in staffing. But we don't have a lot of detail about what those look like yet. Uh, so it makes it difficult to evaluate the budget overall. Uh, and then third, the uncertainty around how schools will reopen this fall makes it very difficult to evaluate whether the budget being proposed will ultimately be responsive to the new reality that we face. Um, of course, you know, we've heard uh that PPS staff will be working very hard over the next few weeks and months, articulate what that looks like, and there will be adjustments to come. So one of our recommendations will be to continue to engage us as a committee. The focus of our review was on the four budget goals uh that were uh the result of the visioning process uh that was completed in 2019. Uh, as a reminder to everyone, those four goals were third grade reading, fifth grade mathematics, eighth grade snapshot of graduate performance, and uh, where do I go? Oh, and post-secondary readiness um and ready for college and career. Of those four goals, we really felt that third grade reading was the most immediately at risk because of COVID limitations and distant distance learning, especially for grades K through two that are just really unable to self-direct. So the committee's observations, and there are 15 members of our committee, uh, and this is a unanimous report that we're delivering tonight. We believe the budget demonstrates substantial support for those four board goals. And we applaud finance staff for really helping us connect the dots about how this proposed budget supports those four goals. It wasn't readily apparent in the budget document itself, uh but they they uh really stepped up and gave us great assistance in in terms of helping to understand what that looked like. We also believe the superintendent and board are deeply committed to racial equity and social justice and that the RESJ lens has improved the district's focus on historically underserved students. We believe the board and superintendent have overall crafted a budget that is squarely focused on investing in historically underserved students and specifically black and native students. We have a number of members on the CBRC that have been on the CBRC for years. I think it's fair to say, although this was not part of our report, that this is far and away uh the most equity centered budget that we have seen. The equity allocation of eight percent of the staffing model at targeted schools has held steady since FY sixteen seventeen, and we continue to support this shifted investment in those schools. We do have concerns about proposed cuts to pre-COVID investment uh account investments in the multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, that we just heard about, uh and school counselors. In uh K five and K eight schools that receive federal Title I funding uh or were identified on low student performance for comprehensive support and improvement or CSI. We also believe the $7 million in cuts to central services may be untable. The district has a long history and we all understand why. We want to make sure that we continue to support direct services to students. But you may be cutting too deeply into your administrative core services to the point where it makes things difficult in terms of overall coordination. Um, and so that sort of wraps up the the observations that the that the committee had. And I'll turn it back over to Sarah for recommendations.
Great, and I think we agreed we'd be glad to take questions, but it that made that it made more sense to hold them until after we deliver our recommendations. So we'll look forward to those once I share the the following recommendations. And so we had a number, and I think you'll find that they they tie to our observations pretty closely. And so to start, um, we recommend additional investment to the extent it's possible in supporting K three literacy. And while, as Thomas noted, we recognize that all students have been impacted by the incredible limitations of distance learning. And we're particularly concerned about younger students who are often unable, as Thomas noted, to self-direct um based on research done just, you know, right in our own backyard about um estimates for learning loss. And projections suggest uh that students may lose up to 70% of typical learning gains in reading and 50% in math by next fall. And those estimates are are typically much starker for our younger students in lower grades. And we are all, I think, well aware that states are shifting literacy policies to really, you know, implement the science of reading. We know a lot more about what it takes to um provide explicit high quality instruction in reading. Um, and we know that more resources are needed to really assist PPS if we're to stay on track to meet that first board adopted goal of 60% of third graders reading proficiently by the end of the 2122 school year within this particular um either virtual or uh hybrid distance learning context. Uh, second, we recommend that PPS continue to advocate for protecting and enhancing the K 12 budget for Oregon school districts writ large. Um, class sizes uh despite efforts to date and and the passage of the Student Success Act investment remain unacceptably high in this state and in our district. And the Oregon Department of Education, QEM, recommends funded, recommended funding levels uh has still not been achieved. I think everyone on this call is aware of that. And while the SSA was a big step in the right direction, we know that the overall investment in Oregon students is still not adequate. So this is really a call for more advocacy um on behalf of PPS at the state level. Uh, third, we recommend that uh when clear guidance for opening schools is available, that the board um sort of revisit and revise the budget to address whatever that new reality is. And I I very much think that this is the intent uh of the district. Um, but we wanted to underscore the importance. Um, and in particular, um note the massive variation in distance learning uh that has played out across the district by school and even by grade band within a school. I can attest to that personally in my own child's experience. Um, and and in some cases, that variation just isn't acceptable. Uh, and if we have the data to tell us, I think we were certain as a committee that it would reflect variation broken down around along racial and income demographic lines. Again, unacceptable. And so if schools are allowed to open on a limited basis with low student density, though uh through, for example, block scheduling or hybrid blended learning, the district's budget should reflect a move towards standardized approaches to distance learning, um teacher training and support for these new systems. These budget revisions should be operationalized through the RESJ lens that we know the district is committed to, to ensure that blended learning offerings are not, will not exacerbate inequities regardless of how instruction is delivered. So this is really reconsidering the budget in light of whatever the circumstances call for as we get new and more information. Fourth, we recommend increased investment in recruiting, supporting, and retaining teachers of color, even as the district faces budget constraints that could lead to teacher reductions in force moving forward, perhaps less starkly this year, but next year as we anticipate further cuts. Um, we cannot afford to lose ground on the early progress we've made on this front as a district. And to be clear, our black and native students will stand to lose the most if we back off of those commitments. Fifth, we recommend that the district protect or increase funding for services to support students with disabilities. Next year, special education leaders and teachers will be challenged to provide supports within a continuum of teaching and learning models, distance through distance and or brick and mortar schooling. And it will be imperative even more so that they have adequate funding to address critical decisions about whether to provide services in separate settings, how to support parents now responsible for more services at home, and the complication of following compliance. Sixth, uh, we recommend maintaining support for diagnostic assessments such as the MAP and adding student and school-wide measures of social and emotional learning supports to more nimbly and effectively understand students' needs and progress, now more important than ever, we would argue. Um, we know that assessments alone won't result in increased support and outcomes for students. And so we're also calling on PPS to make sure that we're adequately resourcing, um, you know, teachers and preparing them to be more data literate and be able to use those data that we are collecting, both in terms of academic outcomes and health and mental health and wellness outcomes, and that they're able to really use those to make um more and better informed decisions on behalf of their students. And finally, we recommend that the PPS board continue to engage us, the Community Budget Committee, for the very substantial budget amendments that we anticipate to come over the course of the next several weeks and months as the budget is reconciled to final forecasts.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, um, both of you. Um, I'll start out, start out with one kind of high level question about your recommendations, Sarah. Are your recommendations really a statement of principles that the CBRC is expressing? Or are they directly um related to gaps or um perhaps deficiencies that you noted in the budget framework?
That's a great question. I'm happy to field field it first and then Thomas, uh, please uh add on. Um, I think probably a mix, to be honest. I mean, in in part um out of necessity because we were reviewing a budget that didn't reflect, doesn't reflect reality. Um, and so we we um wanted to focus um in particular on the alignment of proposed um, you know, expenditures against the four board goals. So we we looked at that in principle and then, you know, to the extent that we had accurate information available that was more reflective of what we are anticipating having available budget wise next year, we did try to connect our recommendations to observations specifically or specific line items within the budget. So um, you know, the MTSS one is a good example and actually might reflect, you know, potentially misunderstanding, which would be good to unearth over the course of the discussion that you all will have. You know, a a spreadsheet that we saw pretty recently as a committee, um, our understanding was that the original budgeted amount, which was close to a million for MTSS, was reduced by nearly $867,000 um i- in the revised budget. And so to us, that our understanding was that that was sending a signal of 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 a cut um in services or maybe not a cut of services that hadn't been offered, but a delay in implementing some of that. And so that was an example of us, you know, making an observation about MC, MTSS or expressing a concern that was directly tied to a line item that we saw um and that was shared with us. But to answer your question more explicitly, I would say a mix, and briefly, I would say a mix. Thomas, anything to add? I think you're on mute, Thomas.
Thank you. I I thought you covered it well. I think the other, so so I think that there was some deficiencies. Although it's very difficult for citizen budget advisors to dive into the tens of thousands of lines of detail of all the departments across PPS, one of the things that I think we felt pretty strongly about was that learning loss, K three in particular, around literacy is something like 50 to 70%. I think that was a report that we saw at one point. Um, and so we didn't see a real strong investment in that area. Um, we had some concerns about that, and we felt that that might be an area you want to look at, especially given that it's a, that it's a uh a goal that the board specifically called out in just last year. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. Um, board questions for our CBRC representatives?
So um, this is a a little tongue in cheek, but actually serious as well. And and especially because you're you're versed in the entire budget. What would you have us spend less on if we were going to spend more on in any of the uh areas you uh picked out? Which I am very sympathetic with everything that you said. So that's, that's not the issue. But um, you know, that's, that's our dilemma. But I I wondered if there were areas that you saw that you thought, yeah, here's an area you might be able to tweak down in in your assessment with with doing minimal impact on our students.
I can answer that. I mean, the answer is no. The the committee did not go into the budget and attempt to identify shifts that could occur from one area to another. Um, we just felt that that was beyond our capacity in terms of limitations that we have right now. It is a very good question. You are faced, there was a presentation, I don't know, before the board, a couple of board meetings ago about um, you know, it's not a zero sum gain environment. Uh, you know, the pie doesn't, but there really is a pie, right? I mean, you really do have finite decisions. You have a finite budget, you have finite resources. Um, the budget, the 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 district cannot do all the things that it wants to do. And so when we hear um lofty aspirations that are not backed by resources, we we do get a little skeptical. Um, that said, to be honest, no, we were not able to dive in and identify other areas that we would recommend to cut in. So uh unfortunately, that is um your thankless task. Sorry.
Yeah. And, and again, partly that was tongue-in-cheek because I know.
It's why we get paid the big bucks, though. Just more of a, a sort of a comment. Thomas, it's good to see you again. Thomas and I have worked together on a lot of budgets over the years. The, what I really, I appreciated the, the recommendations in the CBRC report. They're very well thought out and very thorough. And you say you haven't had time to dive into a lot of line items, but I actually was really impressed with, with sort of what you did do. And, and I, I just want to call and I think it's, it might come up later in the conversation as well. But your point about the, the cuts to central services being untenable, I, I think is a really important one. And I want to, I just want to amplify that because all the things you talk about in terms of literacy, third grade literacy and, and advocating, you know, for more resources, et cetera, are really important. But I don't want to lose that, that point that, you know, when we, and I'm going to say the same thing in about an hour, I'm sure. So just get ready for it again. When we talk about administration, when we talk about central services, that is always, and I've gotten about 400 emails over the last two days saying, why don't you cut those services? And the, the thing that I find most interesting is in a lot of those emails, they simultaneously complain about the lack of communication, the lack of school support, the lack of engagement, the lack of maintenance in their school, the lack of HR help, the lack of, you know, goal setting and accountability. Every one of those things they're complaining about are administrative costs. And so I think as we look at this budget and we go into this conversation, and we have been over the last few weeks, and as we go into it and we go into those cuts, it's not that we shouldn't cut administration. It's, it's going to have to happen, but being really, really careful and thoughtful and conscientious about that because those are the things and those are the, those, you know, administration has this bad rap, but it is actually incredibly important to a successful school system. So I just really appreciate that the CBRC included that in your report. So thank you.
Can I offer a quick, quick comment to that? Just a sort of close sign. Two things really, and I'll be brief. One is, I think what, I think that our recommendation around preserving or not sort of being very thoughtful about what cuts are made centrally directly ties in a lot of ways to the, our concerns about K3 literacy, given where the district is in, in supporting educators and rolling out a new, more rigorous, robust curriculum. I think that does take a certain level of, of support centrally to do that in a, in a really high-quality, effective way from a communication standpoint, from a pedagogy standpoint, from a training standpoint. And so I actually see those things directly connected and I think that's just, I wanted to underscore that. And secondly, I think it ties to the point we tried to make around variation being unacceptable. I'm not someone who wants to go in and tell, you know, I think school, every school has its own rhythm and rhyme and culture. And I'm not, I don't think we're suggesting to take away from that, but I think the degree of variation that those of us on the committee experienced, those of us with students in Portland Public Schools experienced over the last several months and the possibility of that continuing over the course of the next, you know, the coming months is concerning. And part of that, I do think, ties to the level of support, you know, common expectations and support that a school system is setting and then following through on. And so it's sort of a question about, are we a school system implementing something? Or are we a system of individual schools that are sort of their own fiefdoms and going their own way and making choices? And again, it's not that one is right and the other is wrong, but I think as we're trying, you know, in this whole new world, implementing some sort of distance learning or hybrid next year, it's going to be increasingly important to have support centrally to do that well and measure it and, and continuously improve.
I think, I think that's a really good, great remark and I'll, I'll make one more and then ask the board if there's other questions. I think the last time that the CBRC looked at the staffing for just your central information technology shop, for example, and forgive me, but I'm, I'm going off recollection, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. We saw in the ballpark of around 50 FTEs in your central IT shop. An organization of similar size and complexity, the city of Portland has, I think, north of 200 people in that same function. And so as we step into a place where distance learning, although we don't like, we don't like it, may become more of a norm, a, a shop of that size may not be tenable going forward. Now, let me be clear, the CBRC is not recommending specifically, you know, increased investments in the IT shop. It's just as simply an example of one of the areas that, that may, that may be cut as a, as a result of the budget being proposed, when really an investment in that area would be smart if it was possible. And we understand the very difficult and almost impossible trade-offs that are before the board, but I thought I would just highlight that as an example. We do need to also cover at some point here briefly the levy, but there may be other questions about our budget reported, so I'll, I'll stop.
Thank you, Thomas. Let's do, let's, board members, do we have more questions about their recommendations before we move on to their levy report?
First of all, just real quick, I should have led off with a big thank you to you and the committee's work.
And I would have to say, I, this is Director Lowry, I assist the CBRC, as did Director Moore back in the day. And I just really appreciate both Sarah and Thomas's leadership and the way that you have worked really hard to try to make sure all voices are heard. And they do this cool thing where you have to like move your name tag if you want to speak. So there's, they're making sure there's room for all voices. And I just, I want to thank you for your impressive leadership this past year and the hard work you've done.
Ditto. You're here.
And I'm going to.
Cheers. My accolades. I also just want to say, I just want to say thank you to the CBRC as well for their commitment. We had, they asked great, challenging questions in their last meeting, which I had a chance to, to dialogue with them about. I really appreciate the report. And I appreciate calling out that our primary grade level students really do need access to high-quality literacy materials. And thank you for using technology as another area where we need to make sure we have sufficient resources. Curriculum and technology, I think those are two areas we've been talking about that we need to find resources for, perhaps in our new bond. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And we also, we also appreciate the direct engagement of top leadership, certainly yourself, superintendent, as well as directors that have attended over the years. So very much appreciated. So moving in, I'll be very brief about the, the operating levy report, which is the second charge of the CBRC. The CBRC conducted a general review of Portland Public Schools expenditures of the local option levy, funds that were approved by voters in, this is November of 2014, the previous levy, not the one that was just approved in November. So Measure 26-161 mandates independent citizen oversight to ensure tax dollars are used for purposes approved by the local voters. So the review period for this report is expenditures from the prior school year, because that's where the books are closed, for FY 2019 and 2020. The CBRC found in brief that in fiscal year 2019, 2020, all levy funds were spent as approved by voters. With respect to the use of levy funds for maintaining teacher positions, PPS has received a little over $95.3 million as of April 29th, 2020, from Multnomah, Washington and Clackamas Counties. Based on the 2019, 2020 receipts and an average teacher cost of $106,000, and that includes salaries, taxes and benefits, levy funds will support approximately 890 teaching positions for the, supported rather, 890 teachers for the 1920 school year. This meets the levy goal of supporting at least 640 teachers. And at the same time last year, the levy, in the previous year, the levy supported approximately 870 teachers. So from year to year, there was enough growth in the levy to support an additional 20 teachers. So we would be very remiss as a CBRC for not thanking voters for that very substantial contribution to PPS. Without that contribution, there would be absolutely untenable cuts to teachers in the district and, and also a similar increase in, in the student teacher ratio. So it's absolutely critical to the success of the district and, and it is being expended the way that it was intended. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And it is unfathomable to think about what our district would look like without that continued generosity of our voters. All right. So without any further ado, I think we will move on to our primary discussion of the budget. Again, I want to recognize to the CBRC, we feel your pain about this difficult process this year. There's a lot of things difficult about this year for our school system, but the budget process is just as challenging and confusing for us, given the, the constraints and the unknowns as it was for you. So thank you for, for persevering and thank you for your good guidance. And we absolutely will be back to you when we come to the discussions around the amendments. And we, we look to your guidance through that process as well.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent Guerrero, tonight we have your proposed budget for the 2021 school year coming to us for approval. As we heard on May 26th, when you first shared the budget proposal with us, it's focused clearly on our core values, our theory of action and concepts outlined in, in our community-driven vision for PPS. We've also had the opportunity to hear directly from our community through focus groups at the town hall last week and from community members who have taken the time to communicate directly with us. So Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Claire, and for recognizing that the input and the development of our priorities makes the alignment of resources that much easier when, when you're upfront about those values. So this is the next step in the process. As you know, we're simultaneously, like most districts, moving forward, propose budgets at the same time that we're being proactive about adjustments and amendments that will come later. But I'm going to turn the reins over to our leader in this effort, who's really been quite the taskmaster with all of us, our Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz.
Certainly I can appreciate how difficult an abbreviated process is, trying to get all the pieces in, in place. And I too want to add my congratulations on an excellent process for the CBRC, for Sarah and Thomas. Certainly appreciate all the efforts that you've put forward and I look forward to continuing to work with you through probably the month of August as we work all of this through. And so with, for tonight, you have before you a resolution and we are asking you to approve a budget of 2.7 billion, 2.725, I should just say, 2,725,770, no, I'm not saying it right, 2,725,770,000. It is for 2021. Now that includes a billion-dollar bond program that the board is in discussion for November 2020 election. So just wanted you to know that there is a placeholder in for your current discussion there. It also includes full funding that we received pre-COVID from Oregon Department of Education for our state school fund and our Student Investment Act or account. So while those are, so our budget right now is overstated. We are, we still have not received official notification from ODE of what our funding will be, other than that original notification that came to us in early March. So we're bringing forward the only notification we have from the Oregon Department of Ed. And then that's why we want to come after, because we have the June 30th adopted budget deadline for, by statute, in order to operate beginning July 1, that we will come back and bring an amended budget once the legislature has their special session and the final funding mechanisms are determined. And then we get our reports out of the Oregon Department of Education and then we'll bring you a balanced budget, having conversations both with the board and the CBRC as we continue to refine that. You, as all of you are aware, we have been, we have estimates of what the funding will be and we are moving forward with the estimates. And we will continue to refine as, even just this week, we've made refinements to the budget. So we will continue to refine as we hear more information, but in the meantime, we must bring forward a, a budget to adopt. We are also asking you to, excuse me, a budget to be approved tonight. We're also asking you to impose or the, approve the tax rates for both our operations, our local option levy, and then of course, our, our capital bond program. So those rates are in the resolution as well. So with that, I turn that back to the board chair for discussion.
Thank you. So Deputy Superintendent Hertz, we have had conversations as a board and with the community at our budget town hall about the, the thinking of the superintendent and the leadership team around a framework for the, the cuts that we will likely need to make after we have our revised budget. So I think you laid it out very clearly that what is before us tonight for approval is just the, the essential framework of the budget at the pre-COVID numbers. But as part of our duty as board members, we have also been engaged in the thinking behind the priorities and the strategies for the cuts that we know we will need to make. And so if you just want to speak briefly to what that process moving forward is likely to look like?
So as we, we understand the legislature is expected to come in session on June, between June 22nd and July 4th. So once we see if they make actions to make changes to what has been brought forward as a proposal from the governor, then we would refine our numbers based on whatever actions they take. And then we would wait for, of course, getting the official estimates from the Oregon Department of Ed. We have already had a lot of dialogue on the, you know, what our reductions are and how we're balancing the shortfall in general funds, the shortfall in Measure 98 funding and, but then the actual additions in the Student Investment Act, SIA funds. So right now, we have investments in the SIA that are in, would be considered a grant fund. And if, if they, the legislature decided to move things from the grant fund into our general fund, all the investments that we have there, based on our strategic plan, would still be eligible to be spent in general fund. So it's just meaning we'd have to have a change in appropriation level, but we'd still be able to go forward with our current plan that, as we have produced and publicly shared in budget focus groups and the budget town hall and also have, you know, having multiple meetings with the board acting as our budget committee, as well as through the CBRC process. So we will come back and, and give a full reconciliation of any changes that, in terms of how they move from fund to fund, so you understand what the amendments and the modifications would be. Not anticipating, as long as there isn't an overall change or a loss of funding, not anticipating more, any more reductions, but if there is any additional funding and what we might be able to add back.
Thank you. Open it up for board discussion or questions? Yes, Maxine?
Yeah, like using my hand, I think it works a little bit better. You know, just being in school, I know these things. No shade, no shade. I just, no shade.
We're school learners.
I'm just wondering, I feel like I've also kind of been not as involved in this budget process as maybe I should have, just because I've been busy, but just doing graduation and things. But luckily, like we have students who are really involved, like Jackson and Parker and Tay, you all know and love them, as our, as our little, yes, we love them, who are very involved in this process, which I'm very appreciative of. And we had a conversation in. And we had a conversation in the DSC about budget stuff. And basically, like, I have a lot of questions, but I feel like, you know, it's not very productive to just list them all off. I'm also really tired now. But I guess, like, big question, where are students going to specifically feel the cuts to the budget? Like, I know that general funding is going to be cut, but I don't think, I don't specifically know, like, the number of staff or admin or teachers, so, or like where they'll be cut, what schools. So, I guess I'm just wondering, like, what, how exactly, like, will those cuts impact students to start with?
Maxine, I think that is the absolute perfect question to start our discussion off. And I just want to put the motion on the table, which we have not yet done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that wasn't my bad.
I feel like I should know this by now, guys, I've been doing it for so long.
No, that was my bad. And then we will come back to discuss with your very insightful question.
I thought we were moving too fast. I got excited. I was like, it's 9:17, I'm really looking forward to this conversation. Sorry.
No, absolutely perfect. So, the board will now vote, will soon vote on Resolution Number 6129, Budget Committee Approval of the 2020-2021 Budget and the Imposition of Property Taxes. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Director Bailey moves, and Director Bryn Edwards seconds the motion to adopt Resolution Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
Yes, there are three people.
Great, we'll go into public comment, and then, Maxine, we're coming right back at you.
Again, I'm very sorry, I did not realize what was going on, my bad.
Matt Morton, Matt, you should be unmuted.
Yep.
We hear you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Chair Constam, Vice Chair Moore, Directors, Superintendent Guerrero, pleasure to be here with you. My name is Matt Morton. M-O-R-T-O-N. I'm from the Squawson Island Drive in Western Washington, and I'm also the Equitable Education Portfolio Director at Meyer Memorial Trust. And between 2011 and 2015, I had the honor to sit in your hot seat as a member of the Board of Education. Perhaps most importantly, I'm a PPS parent. My son Marcus just finished fifth grade at Fabian. I'd like to start my comments by thanking the superintendent and his staff for the thoughtful and intentional ways in which the district has responded to our national crisis, the coronavirus, and anti-black racism. Superintendent, thank you so much for hearing the voices of black students and other students of color, and continuing to take cues from our young leaders. Students want schools to be safe, so they feel a sense of belonging, and as their identities are forming and growing, they feel affirmed. Your recent decision to remove SROs is a great example of your values and your commitment to students. I want you to know that I'm 100% behind you, and I'm rooting for PPS. Thank you. It's really powerful to see decisions like this as injustice. So, as I reflect on my time on the board, I'm struck by how the circumstances we face today are so entirely different than when I served. I'm also really struck by how familiar some of the reactions feel. For example, when facing the stark realities of the structural inequalities of our system, and despite the affirmations of the importance of equity, many of our white parents and community members cling to the status quo. And despite being card-carrying members of the education equity clubs around town, when investments are made in organizations from communities of color to serve communities of color, these members advocate to defund these investments based on them not being fair for, quote, "all students." So, I've watched the budget presentations, and I've read over the proposal. And I'm not surprised when, just weeks after our nation watched the brutal killing of another black man at the hands of the police, to once again see these patterns play out in the same exact way. Those who proclaim with the loudest voice that they are anti-racist are now claiming that unless you go back to the status quo and fund what has already been in place and what we know is not working for black and Native students, that the district is not being equitable. I can only imagine the number of phone calls and emails you're receiving right now from people who are all in for equity, just not for black and Native students. We must break this pattern. And I'm also hopeful, because I believe that with the superintendent's leadership, combined with your support, we can disrupt this nefarious Portland pattern. I was thrilled to see the alignment between your strategic direction and vision for the district and your proposed set of investments and reductions. Of course, no one wants to see reductions. It was clear to me that PPS was using your racial equity and social justice lens to propose its budget. At Meyer, we're aligned with your strategies, and we fund many of the same partners who are employing culturally specific and culturally responsive strategies to support PPS students. Our investments are aimed at creating systems change that eliminates disparities. So, our priorities and your theory of action are deeply tied. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share just a few of my thoughts today, and thank you for your leadership and support of our black students and other students of color. I'm confident that with this focus, we'll begin to build a system where every student can succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, former director. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Ms. Bradshaw? Thank you.
We have Marcus Monday. Marcus, you are unmuted.
Welcome, Mr. Monday.
I am unmuted. Hello, hello. My turn, thank you so much. Good evening, Chair Constam, Vice Chair Moore, Directors and Superintendent Guerrero. My name is Marcus Monday, and I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition of Communities of Color, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. And I'm going to go off script for a minute, because every board meeting I've been to before this has been great, of course, but I have to tell you, it's been gripping to hear your board and this budget reflect equity, and so many, so many different versions of it. And I thank Director DePass for her comments about discomfort. I have frequently been uncomfortable in these discussions on the other side, but I'm so glad that you all are talking about this tonight and dedicating the work of PPS to this work. So, back on script. The Coalition is an alliance of culturally specific, community-based organizations here in Portland, whose mission it is to address the socioeconomic disparities, institutional racism, and inequity of services experienced by our families, children, and communities. Our alliance, representing the racial and ethnic diversity of our community, organizes our community for collective action resulting in social change to obtain self-determination, wellness, justice, and prosperity. So, for almost 20 years, our members, and you know them, Self-Enhancement, Inc., ERCO, Latino Network, Native American Youth Association, Kairos, and many more of our members, have stood next to you and the PPS and Portland Public Schools to provide culturally specific services to students and families at PPS. We are instrumental in ensuring black, Native, Latino, and other students of color at PPS have access to culturally specific family engagement, wraparound services, leadership, mentoring, and extended learning opportunities. And I will say, thanks to the leadership and commitment from Superintendent Guerrero and his senior leadership team, culturally specific support from our community-based partners will be increasing. You all just approved the budget. This is the right call, and in full alignment with the district's newly articulated vision, which I support, and which I was thrilled to participate in and contribute to over those long sessions last year. Together, despite many people within and outside of our community questioning the increase of funding, whether it's SSA or just the school budget, for racial equity-aligned strategies, I'm proud that PPS will provide more support for our community's black and Native children and many more students of color. That is absolutely the right leadership move, Mr. Superintendent, and thank you for recognizing and being about a bold, anti-racist agenda, one that centers the lived experience of our young people and makes change. I actually encourage you to be a bit bolder, but maybe that's for the next budget. I had previously written in the community that I, my brothers, my son, my cousins, and my friends, all black men, watched an abject horror a few weeks ago as yet another black man died at the hands of yet another policeman in yet another video broadcast to the world as if it were some rerun detached from reality. It was not detached from reality, it is reality, our daily, inescapable reality as black men in America. And so, when I heard the superintendent, his call to eliminate SROs, I know that he wasn't calling out any one individual. Instead, Superintendent, you were calling out the structural racism that continues to create gaps for black students and students of color. We support that. Let me be honest, as a black man in America, as a black man in Portland, I am, as Fannie Lou Hamer said, "I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired." And that is why I'm here today, almost at 9:30, thank you, to speak to you. As a black man in America, and as the Executive Director representing this diverse group of black, Native, and community of color-led organizations, I would trade a million lawn signs stating "Black Lives Matter" or "In Our America" for a single day of those epigrams being realized through action. So, how do "Black Lives Matter" in PPS? What political maneuvering policies or side conversations are you having that do not center the lived experiences of black and brown lives? And I'm talking to board members and staff and anybody that deals with this system. What voices are you listening to? These are the questions that we have to ask. What priorities are you ignoring when you succumb to public pressure from communities with privilege? What does that say to black and brown children in this district? Look, this isn't about taking from someone to give to another. As Mr. Latimer, I think, said, "This isn't a zero-sum game." But as you know, this district, like every public institution in Portland and Oregon, was founded on the idea that black lives don't matter. So, while I know that the public pressure for systemic change is being carried out by voices on the streets of American cities, and protest and agitation is a tool for change, I ask that institutions, this institution, and leaders like you, to truly double down on your commitment to black and Native children. I commend and am cautiously encouraged that Superintendent Guerrero is proposing a significant increase to support culturally specific work in this district, one that centers racial equity. This commitment, reflected by increased funding to culturally specific, community-based organizations, shows me that this administration, that's a tough word, that this administration is making strides to listen and truly partner to right historical and current wrongs. There is more to be done. But as you consider this budget, I ask you to join our table. Sit with us, continue to call us. Our members can help your overwhelmingly professional and yet still overwhelmingly white staff build real relationships with black, brown students and their families. We also know a secret or two about hiring people of color. And the next time you're approached by stakeholder groups who are trying to influence you with a social media post, a call, or even attempting to speak for me, like a white woman did the last time I was here before you, call me or my members directly. Because it took us 401 years to get here, and it's only been a mere three weeks since Brother George Floyd was killed. We have a long road ahead together, but we are your community. So, thank you for letting me speak this evening, just a regular black man in America who's seen enough. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Monday, for joining us tonight, and I also want to just thank you personally for your letter that you wrote on behalf of the Coalition of Communities to collaborate your letter after George Floyd's death, your "We Can't Breathe" letter, and specifically for the very local and immediate calls to action that you included in that letter. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, and thank you all for bearing with me.
Lord, when we hear commitments like that from someone who represents our communities of color and the organizations that serve them in partnership with the district so much as possible, thank you, Mr. Monday, for your remarks tonight.
Absolutely, thank you.
We have Whitney Grubbs. Whitney, you're unmuted. Great, can you hear me? Yes. Great. Good evening, Chair Constam, Vice Chair Moore, Directors and Superintendent Guerrero. My name is Whitney Grubbs. I'm the Executive Director of the Chalkboard Project and Foundations for Better Oregon. I am also, as of Tuesday, the proud mom of a Jefferson High School graduate. Chalkboard Project is a nonprofit organization jointly led by a coalition of Oregon's largest philanthropic foundations. Working primarily at the state level, we collaborate with impacted communities, educators, and policymakers to analyze, develop, and advocate for policy changes and public investments that ensure every child in Oregon can learn, grow, and thrive. For the past year, we have been deeply engaged in implementation of the Student Success Act as a critical lever for advancing educational equity. Like many, we celebrated this long-awaited investment in our public schools, which targets resources toward improving academic and mental health outcomes for our most underserved students. With the COVID crisis and resulting revenue shortfall, our efforts at ensuring the act is implemented have shifted to ensuring these critical investments are preserved. This is hard and not what any of us hoped for. COVID-19 is disproportionately impacting our communities of color. When coupled with the violent attacks on our streets and in our schools and communities, the sustained trauma that our Black, Indigenous, and children of color have borne for centuries is being compounded. In late April, we at Chalkboard Project joined over 20 partners in a letter urging Governor Brown and the legislative leadership to put children first when mapping Oregon's road to recovery. Since sending the letter, we've been convening with state and local leaders, education associations and unions, community-based organizations, and policymakers like you to find common ground. We have been energized by the alignment across different groups and inspired by the commitment from local leaders like Superintendent Guerrero to making racial equity target investments and partnership with culturally specific organizations, making sure that they are not just nice to have when times are good. What has emerged are some clear priorities across the state, which are represented well in your proposed budget and emerging strategic plan. First, in the short and long term, we must invest state and local resources with an anti-racist lens. We must continue to partner with trusted community organizations, like the ones Marcus mentioned, to support the academic and social-emotional needs of every child. And we must invite and accept the wisdom of the families and students who are currently not being served. Second, we must support our educators, and especially our educators of color, who are uniquely positioned to support historically underserved students. In this moment, we must come together to find ways of ensuring that any necessary layoffs do not disproportionately impact educators of color. We are in the midst of seismic shifts, there is no returning to the way things were. In grappling with the impacts of these fiscal, public health, and societal challenges, you at PPS can lead the state in acting courageously to rebuild a more fundamentally resilient and equitable public education system. As an education advocate and a PPS parent, I've been so inspired by the conversation tonight. Thank you so much for your leadership, Superintendent Guerrero, and for you to the board in adopting this racial equity-centered budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have any further public comment?
No, that's it.
All right, fantastic. Are you still with us, Maxine?
Yes, barely. I could fall asleep at any moment.
We hear you. So, the question you posed, I thought was perfect.
Visit our website at www webex.com.
A short commercial break.
Yeah, maybe we should just all take a quick stretching commercial break. You know, it is 9:36, everyone, reach your hands up. I think we all really need this right now. Come on, everybody. Want to see everybody's hands up? Come on, get that blood flowing. Let's go, people. Let's go, people.
What do they call it? What is that noodle thing?
I don't know, but we all need a stretch break. It is late and I know Andrew wants to be asleep because he always likes to get these things moving. So Superintendent, I'll use jokes before I leave.
Superintendent Guerrero, do you want to circle back to Maxine's question, which is?
Do you want me to repost my question?
Do you want to rephrase it?
Or I don't, I don't care. I'm just asking if anyone needs a refresher.
Go for it.
Okay, my question, sorry, now I have to like go back through my documents. Um, I'm wondering how the cuts are going to impact students? Like what, what, what? Sorry. How, how are these impacts? How are these cuts going to affect students directly? What, what will it feel like for students? Whether it be admin or staff or specific teachers for certain programs? What exactly will it feel like for students to experience these cuts?
Well, I could give you the technical answer and people could go to our two-volume proposed budget and you could go school by school and you could see exactly what the budget proposes in the way of resources for each site. And if you wanted to apply an equity lens, you could start by looking at the per pupil average school by school and you could ask yourself, uh, is the funding equitably distributed? Particularly when you think about underserved community, school campuses? And what kind of an experience is that going to be able to ensure for students when they come to school every day? So, uh, the challenge in, in school systems, Maxine, is always how do you provide the best possible high-quality day for a student who walks through any one of our schools? And I think what we've proposed to do rather miraculously, even with a sizable, uh, budget gap, is, is to still move forward, uh, things that we've said are important, uh, things that were actually the intention behind things like the Student Success Act. So even though our general fund took a big hit, given the economy in the state, we still had revenue. We, we had revenue because the good taxpayers of Portland said, uh, a levy is important for preserving over six hundred and fifty teachers, which keeps our class sizes and other professional-serving students. Um, but, uh, the Success Act has permitted us to really invest in a way that we haven't been able to before. We did hear students early on, but we didn't have the capacity to ensure that every school would have access to a social worker, a counselor and those additional interventions that made us even more comfortable that, uh, our first line of defense didn't need to be an armed officer in the hallways at lunchtime. So that's what's going to be a little bit different for our students. Um, if, if you're a high school student and you're attending a school like Jefferson or Roosevelt or Madison and you were interested in the arts and maybe you had a chance to do that in middle school this year because we scraped up the money to add arts there, you don't have to find yourself unable to sign up for band at Jefferson because now it's going to be possible because we've invested in closing pathways for the arts, starting in those clusters. And the same thing, we, for the last year and a half, thank you Aurora, Hi-Mo, who she inventoried along with our high school team, where the gaps were for creating technical education pathways. And there were gaps there. And so we've been filling those in and adding courses as well. So for a high school student, that's another way that the experience is going to feel different. You have expanded CTE offerings available to you. But we also, you know, know that, uh, the biggest difference we can make is to make sure we have, uh, well-trained, supported professional educators, um, who can provide the most differentiated, personalized day, uh, hour to hour for, for our students. And so we've continued to incrementally make investments that chip away at keeping the adult-student ratio as ideal as possible. And those were class-sized goals that we arrived at in partnership with Portland Association of Teachers. And so each year, we've continued to make investments to make sure that for students, the daily experience is that the classroom isn't as crowded as perhaps it was in years past. And particularly at the younger grades. And even though we weren't fully funded with Student Success Act, uh, and I hope that our elected officials are listening, um, we know what it takes resource-wise to provide a quality educational model, uh, of a school day and we're trying to provide it, but just without the QEM level of funding. And so how do we make sure that our students, especially our students of color, have access to high-quality instructional materials? So when they walk into the classroom, their experience is they're seeing authentic literature that reflects their lived experience, uh, written by authors who look like them. We haven't had the ability for a decade to refresh curriculum materials. You're going to find in this budget the beginning of an infusion and investing in the right places that support curriculum and instruction. So it isn't just about the stuff. It's also about investing in our educators and making sure they have access to the instructional coaching, that when they notice that there's a student who's falling behind, that there's access to an additional highly-trained professional who can provide that intervention. So what's different, Maxine, for a student of color who's struggling in an underserved community is that this coming September, with an approved budget, there's going to be an intervention teacher in the hallway who's going to have them in the schedule, who's going to push into the classroom, who's going to provide an extra guided reading group lesson, who's going to be able to diagnostically assess their reading behavior and really try to accelerate what we know is going to be an academic slide during this pandemic. So that's another example of how that experience is going to change. And I'll top it off, just because I could talk all night about this, is if you're a middle-grade student, none of us have been satisfied and understand that we need to reimagine that middle-grade experience. It's been a topic on many a night with this board and the community. And we have an opportunity to, uh, open up the doors at Kellogg Middle School. I have no interest in mimicking a comprehensive middle school model that we see throughout the rest of the district. This is our opportunity to really demonstrate how we reimagine a middle-grade's experience. And so I'm looking forward to in the fall, as part of students' experience and leadership opportunity, to come in and be a part of some focus group and some empathy interviews around what is it that they most need out of those critical years? And we know it's things like identity, uh, development, it's, uh, health and wellness, it's beginning to discover your passion and what you might be interested. So by the time you transition to ninth grade, you have a pretty good idea and you've chosen a school that hosts a program that fits your interests and your future post-secondary goals. That by the end of the eighth grade, that your family and all the adults that, supportive adults, those educator essentials who've had a chance to work with you, that they're going to hear you publicly present how in those three middle-grade years you've grown along all those essentials, those skills and dispositions that we talked about in the graduate portrait, uh, we talked about. It's important to have goals and accountability, but it isn't just about test scores. It's about, let me reflect out loud with my family how I think I've grown in my compassion, my empathy and my agency in the world. Right now is a beautiful way that we're seeing our youth demonstrate some of that now. So how do we make sure that by the end of those middle-grade years that we're well on our way for that student as a graduate portrait to really, uh, demonstrate those kinds of skills and dispositions? So part of the experience that we hope is different is that even if you do attend a current K-2A, a comprehensive middle school, that you're going to have an expanded access to electives? Imagine that, even with this major budget cut, you're going to have access to not having to choose between a second language that you're trying to learn and playing flutes or chorus or, uh, any of some other forward-thinking electives yet to be determined until we talk to our students because perhaps it's computer science, uh, perhaps it's ethnic studies in the middle grades, uh, maybe it's block studies. Uh, there's, there's no limits to the kinds of learning experiences that we don't have to be so, uh, constrained by traditional schedules and use of time and space. So those are a few ways that I think, Maxine, the experience might be different. And if you're a four-year-old whose family hasn't typically had access to early education that is high-quality and will prepare you with the foundation you need to come into kindergarten, that you're going, there's going to be some additional seats and working with the county, hopefully, or focusing in those communities that really need to avail themselves of those opportunities. So off the top of my head, those are a few examples, Maxine.
Okay, thanks. I'll let other people ask questions and then I can come back if there's time and we're all not asleep.
I've got a question. Um, so first I want to just acknowledge, um, that the incredibly complex task that staff had of putting together a budget in an environment in which there's so much volatility, um, and a very condensed process. Um, so the current budget is, uh, seven hundred and eighty million, which is about a twenty million dollar increase. And then of the seven hundred and eighty, we have twenty-five million of that is new money from the Student Success Act. And I think the, uh, superintendent's staff has done a great job of aligning it behind our vision, the board goals, um, the community help inform both our budget priorities through the shaping of the vision and the, also the SIA funding, um, and that strategic investments. Um, so my question would be, so I think we, as I say, around the SIA, we've had a lot of community engagement around those investments. And I think that the initial list we had, every set of proposals of thirty-nine million, um, would, you know, potentially had, could have had a transformative, um, impact on the district. And now we're down to twenty-five. Still, I think the potential to make a big investment or a big impact on the district. Um, but as we head into, you know, potential, um, probably like both ups and downs and ups are always easier, getting, you know, getting more money. It's always, it's always easier to, um, uh, figure out what to do with more money. But in the case in which, um, either our base budget or, um, the amount for the strategic, um, student investment account to go down, what's the process going to be for the ads and deletion? I know we have, um, already some SIA, um, funds that have been set aside, thirteen million that we'd like to invest, but how, how would we decide to pick what, what off that list? How would the community be informed? And then same thing if the legislature comes in and ends up cutting, you know, X amount of dollars out of our, um, budget? It sounds like the process, but we also have a lot of community invested in the vision and the investments. So let me speak a little bit more about what that might look like.
So it's still aligning to our strategic goals and, you know, the district goals and the strategic plan based on our vision. We'll still invest in our black and native students. So we have additional things that we have put on hold. And so you, in the SIA, you have, uh, thirty-nine million to start, twenty-five million we are bringing forward. And then we have another fourteen million that, that we would like to invest. So that, those are things that we learned to first, it's things that we've already prioritized and gone through a whole community process in order to do, in order to, um, determine what, what, how, what was important to them, well, listening to everyone and then also aligning around our, uh, theory of action, um, supporting our black and native students. So we would continue to roll out that same plan. It's, it's not where we need to do, do a whole nother process. We've had very extensive, a year of visioning and another year of, you know, reaching needs assessments and discussing with the community. So I think we've had a very extensive process for two years to, to narrow our focus onto our black and native kids.
And if I may add, and if I may add, this is Jonathan Garcia, Chief Engagement Officer. Uh, I, I agree with Deputy Superintendent Hertz. Uh, we've spent, uh, two, uh, really incredible years, uh, building with our community. Um, and I think, um, that doesn't mean that we stop. That means that we continue, uh, being in community and being in conversation with our communities using our racial equity and social justice lens, uh, which, you know, as, as the board, uh, uh, will recall, the second, you know, question is who are the communities most impacted by our decisions? And, uh, and so as we think about, about that, you know, our, our, our leadership under the superintendent's leadership, uh, he continuously asks us that same question. And so, uh, you know, I, I, I will just add that, uh, Deputy Superintendent, uh, and I will probably work very closely, um, as these numbers, uh, are coming in, uh, to ensure that, that we are having a feedback loop with our community, uh, especially our students, especially our black and native parents, uh, who, uh, we have prioritized, uh, in our strategic plan and in this budget.
So one thing that can, whoops. Jonathan?
Yeah?
There, okay. You're muted, Jonathan.
Oh, I'm done.
Oh, okay, sorry. I guess it's just my catching up. Um, so one of our constraints is timing and how quickly we have to staff over the summer to have our schools open in August, at the end of August. So that's one of our constraints in terms of, um, how much time we have to engage because we are, you know, need to go forward with our process for, um, hiring teachers and staff for the new year.
Right. So for example, say if we get some windfall, like another five, five million on top of the twenty-five, um, it's just using the existing thirteen million dollars, which we had set as that, had already been selected and just moving it into the process quickly. Is that, is that how you envision it?
I think that would be our best way, but at the same time, we have, we also have said we would circle back with CBRC and I, you know, working with, um, our Chief Engagement Officer, again, with the, um, community and students voice. But it will have to be a very shortened process because of the need for staffing to finish, for school to start.
I think we, we also, I would hope would, uh, save some room for, um, considerations around additional expenditures for, to accommodate what this school year is going to look like that is unknown to us, whether it's cleaning or virtual learning or whatever. But that should be a category unto itself.
Good. Can I, can I follow up to that? Um, I, I, I completely agree, Amy. Um, I, I think we have, well, I certainly have, um, only a, a very dim understanding of, um, what the, what the reopening of school is going to look like. Um, what I think I know with pretty, pretty good certainty is that our expenses are going to vastly increase and we're going to have expense lines that we've never had before. Um, you know, we're going to have to be, um, providing personal protective equipment. Um, I, I don't think we've ever done that before. Um, so I, I mean, I'm concerned about the unanticipated expenses that we're, that we may be looking at. Um, but beyond that, um, I'm, I'm wondering what we're, how we're going to be looking at, um, any new money, um, that, that might conceivably come down the pike at some point? Um, and are we considering a longer timeframe? Um, so I, I, I just want to say, I am, uh, pretty flabbergasted that the staff has been able to whittle down the fifty-seven million dollar shortfall to twelve million. And that, um, they have not only held harmless most of our programs, but they, they've actually managed to increase investments in the highest priority items. Um, I, I think that's a minor miracle. What concerns me is that if the projections for the, um, this economic downturn play out, um, we're looking at a budget shortfall that's going to be three to four times worse next year. And it's highly unlikely, I, I assume, that we're going to have the benefits of COVID-related relief from the Congress. Uh, we're not going to have the work share program with the, you know, with the six hundred dollar benefits that we used this year. Um, you know, that, that, the state resources are going to continue to decline. I, I mean, there are a lot of, a lot of things that have allowed us to, to kind of mitigate the damage this year that are not going to be available to us next year. So I'm, I'm a little nervous when I hear that we're, we're gonna stop spending any new money that comes down the pike. Um, I, I, I'd like some reassurance that we're, if, we're filling up the piggy bank a little bit. Um, and I know we already have some, we have some reserves in PPS and the state has a rainy day fund. Um, but if, if the projections are accurate, um, the, the reserves on, But if, if the projections are accurate, the, the reserves on, either our reserves or the state are gonna pale in comparison to the level of the, of the shortfall. So can you, can you put this in a big picture over the, you know, not just next year, but two, three years down the pike?
So the State Economist has made it clear that the revenue shortfall in the recession is, in terms of job growth, getting back to where we started, it's estimated to be a four-year process. And with 2021 being our first year. So we do expect the next biennium to be a shortfall through both years and then the beginning of the next biennium. So there is certainly, I think I've been a broken record about saving our reserves and making sure they last over the four years. And so that is certainly a possibility, addressing COVID pandemic needs to reopen schools and putting, leaving something for reserves because next year we will have used some of our one-time money that won't be there in the following year. So if you're asking me as a financial professional, that's what I, my recommendation would be. We, we've made it through this year and, and really pretty, pretty good shape. And my real concern is the next biennium.
So Claire, we have 63 million. Go ahead, Rita, with your follow-up. I'll go after you.
Well, I just, I just want to clarify. As a finance professional, would your recommendation be that any new money that happens to come down the pike in the next, you know, four to six months, we start whittling away at the wish list or we put it in a piggy bank?
Oh, and the piggy bank, other than what we need to respond to reopening during a pandemic.
Good. So just to follow up, I should clarify, when I was talking about the additional funds, the SIA funds, that my expectation is the legislature gave us more money in that account. Their expectation would be spend it, not save it. But going to the reserves question, Claire, I think we'll have more reserves at PPS than we've had in probably in 25 years to have 9% or about $63 million, which is a great place for us to be. Look at the potential volatility. Just so I understand, the, the approach would likely be to keep that in reserves, manage through this year, and when we get to the next budget cycle where the, the drop in state revenue is supposed to be even larger, that's, that's the point in time that we use reserves or, or you have a different approach?
So there's, I just need to clarify, as of June 30th, 2020, we will have 9%. We have said we will spend the work share dollars next year and will spend this, from the hiring and purchasing freeze from this year, another 9 million. So there's 19 million of that 9% in the fund balance. So we expect to use 3% here. So the 9% will not be there at June 30th, 2021. It's there at June 30th, 2020. And we are using some of it, we said in the spring, when we did these quick things to get money to carry over into the next year. So that was, so we are using part of that 9% that we're accumulating by June 30th of this year to get us through next year. But we'll still have 6% at the end of next year.
So we'd have mid 40s heading into the 21, 22 school year, which is still a lot, but probably not a lot, maybe there is some to that potential.
So we're always gonna try to manage our budget throughout the year to save as much as possible, especially we're, we're gonna spend some time next year. It'll be important, an important year for us to have a good understanding of what it looks like to get through a three-year recession. So we're gonna spend some quality time with our board in the fall, just doing a little bit of planning and thinking about how do we get through and having those discussions before we build the budget for 2021.
And I just want to jump in quickly on this point. 9% may be a large amount for PPS, the largest amount we've had in 10 or 20 years. It's, it's just slightly more than half of what the recommended reserves are for government agencies. They should be in the 16 to 17% range. And so, so it's important to know relatively we're better and yet we're still not where, where I would love to see us eventually. The, the other thing to note, reserves, it's a kind of a common misperception, there are almost never a time when a reserve or rainy day fund will get used through a crisis. What they're good at doing is helping to smooth the reductions. And so instead of really dramatic cliffs where you're laying off, you know, dozens if not hundreds of people, reserves can make that a little bit easier. But it's often a mistake to think about spending reserves in order to maintain service levels through a recession of the type that we're facing. So I, I just want to, want to reiterate that, that it went to the extent we, we spend those down, it needs to be in a very planful way and also a plan for building them back up again as we come, as we come back.
Just one last point on that topic of reserves, which Rita and Ailey can attest to. I think this is the first year in my memory that the CBRC has not led with chastising the board about not making a sufficient commitment to building reserves in the budget. And even as we have been marching toward that goal for the last three years with fidelity in a modest amount, it's still, we're nowhere near where we need to be. And that has always been their chief criticism of the budget process and our budget policy.
So this is a great discussion to have. And as we get better information going forward on revenue projections, you're right, in the fall, it will be a meeting to look at the ramifications of this over the next couple of years. I, I want to ask a couple of specific questions to the budget because all of us got at least one or two letters about PE. So I, I think it would be useful to quickly summarize where we ended up, both with Gen Ed PE and adaptive PE. And in kind of a follow-up to Maxine's, what's it going to look like for students? And I think this is true in, in a number of areas. We're seeing, and I want to focus on special education, we're seeing increased expenditures in some parts of the SPED budget and decreased in others. So I just would like a little more flavor of what, what's caused some of that shift? Are we, are we getting less in terms of federal budget dollars for special education, for example, or is this a, a general fund issue? And what kind of shifts are going on? So that's kind of three questions in one. And the, the adaptive PE is also an opportunity to talk about where we want to go longer term with that program.
So all good questions, Director Bailey. And as you know, we shared with the board earlier, a letter co-signed by our Chief Academic Officer and our Chief of Student Support Services. So I'm going to let them explain it because these areas definitely fall under their direction. And, and I think we have an interesting sort of development moving forward. But Ms. Marnik.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, Director Bailey. So what we are doing is, we are, in special education, we are continuing to align our practices and, and really our philosophy around service to students with special needs in a more inclusive way. One way that we're doing that is through the implementation of our tiered support through MTSS. Another way, as Dr. Valentino and I have been working on this, as well as Jenny Withicam, who is our PE Administrator, and Mary Mertz, who is our Senior Director in Special Ed, we really wanted to look towards additional ways in which we could provide more inclusive practices. And what we believe is moving adaptive PE into the PE and Health Department will allow that training, the cross, the cross-training that will be afforded to our PE teachers and our adaptive PE teachers as well. And then really focus on starting to be more inclusive in our physical education classes, both socially and in the, in the physical manner that PE provides for our students. So I'll go ahead and turn the, any additional comments over to Dr. Valentino.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The only thing I would add, thank you, Brenda, that was, that's exactly what, what the work has been. The only thing I would add is one of the things that this does is, the fact is that it strengthens both, both efforts. It's been a consult model, but by actually blending both the adaptive PE and the regular general IP, I think both benefit from that opportunity. And what it does, it aligns with the provision of more, of a more integrated service model that actually aligns with both of the vision and the emergent strategic plan that addresses equitable access to all of our opportunities. In this case, it's to a comprehensive PE program.
I'm hopeful as that's developed, that parents and our adaptive PE teachers and our Gen Ed PE teachers will all be involved in that so that it is a, so that the approach is not a surprise, but that it's also informed by our parents and families and university services.
Yeah. And I do want to be clear because I know that I have had a number of questions from parents of students with special needs in regards to if services will look different next year. Our adaptive PE teachers will continue to provide the same supports that they've been providing as per a student's IEP. What we will be doing is really working this year on some more inclusive practices, really including parents and students and PE teachers and adaptive PE teachers into that conversation in how we really start to move more inclusive practices forward.
This is, this is a good conversation in terms of being a microcosm of, you know, what we were looking at with MTSS and what we're looking at in terms of our ability to differentiate in the general education setting for all of our students and their various needs.
Yeah. So I just want to say thank you. That's, I think, a great direction to go in. We're, we're behind where I think all of us would like to be in terms of inclusion, and this is a nice step forward. And again, doing it in this way over the next year, there's, there's been some history of, in this district, of trying to implement inclusion for all the right reasons, but not doing it well in ways that actually backfired. So I'm all for doing it well. And, and we've already seen that this year with the, you know, the development of the family-friendly, in many languages, basic information on special education for parents was, again, a really nice collaborative step forward. So I'm, I'm confident that this is, again, one, one piece that we'll implement well and be, it'll be a great, great thing for our kids. And just parenthetically, Dr. Quellar loaned me his dissertation, which looked at the effects of inclusion on general education students. And while it was a small sample, it, it was just pretty much across the board, positive impacts in terms of attendance was higher, student achievement was higher, behavior issues were lower for the general education students who were in an inclusive class as opposed to those who weren't in terms of the two groups that he followed. So this is, again, a win-win where we focus on our neediest students and can get outcomes that affect all students, that targeted associate we talked about.
So, so.
Thank you.
Can I just build off of?
Please.
Director Bailey's comments because I want to thank staff. I know that people worked through the weekend and over the last several days to address the concerns that have been raised about reductions in PE and then also the reduction in the adaptive PE staff. So I just want to let people know that there, there are, just like there are students who they, their one thing is art or science or math, there's some kids who their one thing is PE. So I think that, well, I guess I'll just say I'm very appreciative that staff really moved back through the budget and tried to make it work without having reductions in some basic core classes. A question that came up was whether in the taking care of those reductions, whether there were other staff reductions made to make that happen or was, was it addressed in some other way?
We, in regards to special education, there were no additional cuts that were made in order to restore the adaptive PE staff. Thank you.
Dr. Valentino, you also helped in large part to identify some additional resources in your department. Can you talk about any impact the staff?
Sure. So I, I went, I went back to talk to some of the senior members of my team about how we might be able to support this because one could see that the set of lemons given could, could possibly turn into some amazing lemonade. But it required some conversation late, late at night. And then, so I texted the superintendent early in the morning and said, I think I might be able, we might be able to help. And so by talking, we identified certain pockets. And so what we decided to do was to sort of trade off some, some of our priorities so that we could free up some, some money. I, I mean, I still have to have a, a quick conversation with Claribout of a couple of things just to make sure that, that it's straight, but I think we're gonna be fine. But, but, but I, I think just like you see the opportunity, there is not, there was an opportunity there that would, that we shouldn't waste, right? And otherwise, we wouldn't have been able to do this. And then it would have looked like, well, we cut and we didn't do anything about it. But we all see, saw the opportunity there. So it was more a, a function of how can we help this out? And so I, I think that the team has been and will be supportive with moving forward with the decisions that we made to realign some of our priorities so that we could release some of the funds to, to, to place, to place in this effort.
So the combination of some of these further central office reductions and efficiencies and Director Scott's comments earlier resonating now in my head, combined with some continued spending freezes and management level reductions, we're going to make up that difference and make sure and let our adaptive PE educators know that they were secure.
So I just want to say that very much, Superintendent and everyone. And again, through your perspective, Dr. Valentino and, and Ms. Martinic about, Chief Martinic about using this as an opportunity to be more creative and to push our district toward greater inclusion by thinking differently and structuring services differently. I, I want to just quickly note too that Superintendent appreciate with regard to SPED, your commitment your commitment to increasing support bilingual sped supports in this budget. Really important to see that as an ad. I'm, I'm getting pinged from some of our board members about calling a question on a vote on the budget, and we still have two other items after this. So I'd like to, if we can, go around and just have everyone put forward any remaining questions and comments. Does that sound good? Okay.
Are you saying we, we can ask one, one, one or two last questions or?
Anything lingering for you or any comments you'd like to make? Would you like to start, Director Bailey?
Sure. So one comment is on, on the PE, the, the general education PE as opposed to the adaptive PE. We got a lot of letters. Some of them were very passionate, first person. This is how a PE is so important for my child. Some of them are form letters, which it is what it is. But it's as if they were operating from PPS is doing a budget. It's the same as last year, except they're cutting PE at some schools. I would.
Commentary was presuming it was all schools.
Right. And so I think there's another opportunity, and I talked to Don about this before the last time we had a ton of letters coming in, is, is it possible to scrape those and send a reply? In one, thanks them for their advocacy. And two, fills in the bigger picture around what we're doing in this budget with equity. And this is a chance for us to do some education. And it kind of goes back to our earlier comments or comments by some people. And I, I don't think most were blind to equity. Well, okay, maybe they're, they weren't advocating against equity, but they were advocating blindly without the big picture. And I think this is a chance for us to do some communication to try to move our message forward on this. So that's one suggestion out there. How to do that efficiently. A second thing I'd like to know is we've been working on improving our tag instruction. Is there, and I was wondering what the impacts were on rate and level of tag instruction? Jenny, are we, are we still on the path that we were set for or has that affected at all?
So, so regarding, regarding, this is Luis. Regarding rate and level, one of the things we were going through right before the pandemic, we were going through an audit because we had made agreements with ODE that we would focus rate and level at the middle school on, for example, compact math as an example, as one option. But the, the agreement we had also made at the beginning of the previous year was that we would continue to provide professional development for our teachers on rate and level. And that was going to be ongoing for the next three to five years until we were done. And as new teachers came in, we would add them to the rotation. Then, at the same time, they were going to conduct an audit because, as you know, there was, there was a a level of discomfort by the, by the tag committee on what we had agreed on. So they filed the, the formal complaint with ODE. And so we ended in an audit. And in the middle of the audit, we had to close our schools. The audit is not complete. So Linda Smith, who leads the, the tag program, making conversations with ODE. The agreement is, while we work through the blended model in preparation for the reentry, that we would continue to work towards meeting the rate and level agreements while we finish the audit. And then they are going to report back on what exactly the expectations will be beyond what our agreement has been thus far.
Okay, so no budgetary impacts on that work that would slow that down?
No, not, not, not thus far, no. We, the report may cause that to happen, Director Bailey, but not given what we have in place right now.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Any further question or comment, Director Bailey?
Oh, probably, but let's, let's, I can, I can follow up later. Thank you.
Are we just going to go around, Robyn, Amy?
Sure. I was just going on our Zoom order. So how about Director DePass?
I don't have any big questions. I want to appreciate the staff for being creative. And I know you don't like to use creative and budget in the same sentence, but it's really challenging to come up with where we're going to do these cuts this year. I guess my only question would be, the city of Portland, actually, when they asked staff to furlough, they initially came out with a, everyone in the city needs to take 80 hours of unpaid furlough and then rethought that strategy and so put out a directive for, for employees that are making, I think the cutoff was like 85,700 comes to mind. People that are earning over that need to, need to furlough at the full 80 hours and people that earn, that earn less than that, you know, newer hires, younger staff, less experienced staff, more staff of color, would have a tiered approach to the furloughs so that people at the bottom of the pay scale, whatever that is at the city, it might be like $15 an hour, had to take no furlough. And I'm just wondering, moving forward into next year, if we need to consider that, if, if we still need to consider furloughs in the 2021, 22, would that be something that the district would, would consider? And I could take my answer offline, but it's just something I was thinking about. I have no other comments or questions.
Of course, ironically, our lower wage workers in this part of the the time period, who have been a $600 a week add-on from the feds, many of them are making, I think, more money than they were working their job.
I remember.
In the future, yeah.
That is like July, July 25th, after July 25th, when the CARES Act, you know, runs out, then, then it's like into next year is what I was curious about.
Yeah, yeah.
So also, just the mayor also for, what's the word? He's not taking salary at this point either. So I'm not suggesting that's a great strategy for everybody. But I, I just want to put that on the table, not for this immediate time right now, but for in our, in upcoming budget years.
I think, on that same note, I think Director Valentino, excuse me, Dr. Valentino was being particularly gracious in response to the direct question about where they sourced the money to restructure the and, and reemploy the adaptive PE and the PE teachers. And we do know that some of it is coming from some, some cuts to management pay in the central office and to specifically, I believe, cost of living increases. So we can, we can call that directly and say thank you and recognize that that's baked into a lot of these cost savings. Is that right, Deputy Superintendent Hertz?
Can I get my first answer first there, Claire, before you correct whatever I say? So I proposed budget, and there'll be some amendments and changes, but we'll proceed with viable fiscal year 21 budget. And the way that we're doing that is because we shared with you a few examples of some of the continued freezes and management level efficiencies, we'll call them that. But as we think about the next biennium, you know, all strategies are going to have to be on the table. So it is miraculous to close this massive budget gap and to expect that no one is going to lose their job. We've come close to doing that. And we will have to employ, you know, all prudent cost-saving measures. So I can appreciate the question, Director DePass. I wasn't sure if you were alluding that I should follow the mayor's example, but certainly everything is always an option.
Yeah, not, not, not at all. Just that I, I appreciated the, the machinations that the staff went through to come up with ways to save everyone's job in this, in this fiscal year. And yeah, not, not recommending anybody take a massive pay cut, but just was curious really about the COLAs, the cost of living adjustments, and if that would be something we would consider moving forward.
So I think that the executive team has already considered it and, and said, you know, those of us at this level on the second floor of the building may have to hold off. It's, it's not the time for that, not when we're trying to save people's livelihoods and be a responsible employer. But why don't I let our OASBO International Presidents round out the response?
Thank you. That's appreciated. Thanks.
Claire, did you want to add anything that I missed?
No, I think you covered it well. Thank you.
So just on that particular point, just based on conversations I've had with legislators and some of the executive branch, I do think that when they go back into the special session, this will be a topic of various governmental jurisdictions that get funds from the state of essentially a look at out of, out of state travel, COLAs, pay increases, already you're seeing at the, at least the universities in the state. I think, for example, Oregon State did something similar to, it sounds like Michelle, that they're happening at the city of Portland, where you have sort of progressive, not furloughs, but pay, pay reductions. OHSU did something similar. And I, I can just imagine the conversation with Senator Betsy Johnson about this. So I, I think we should all be prepared that there, there may be some directives at the state level towards all school districts or other jurisdictions as they look at how they're going to try and balance the budget and, you know, make really hard trade-offs between human, human services, education, and lots of other places in the budget that are going to be sustaining some larger cuts than probably education because they don't have the Student Success Act. So I, I for sure think that travel and administrative pay and furloughs are going to be a topic of conversation and maybe even directives from the state level.
You know, I also see this as an opportunity, though. I mean, the loss of pay is probably not a great topic for anyone, but I also see that, you know, I guess I'm an advocate, like, what does a four-day work week look like? And, and how does that transfer to prosperity in terms of, you know, actually, like, some of the people on the call that I know don't take days off? You know who you are, have that time built in to spend more time with your families. And, you know, for those of us that have kids at home still that are doing at-home learning to be, just to allow some time in the schedule. So while, while you would be experiencing a pay cut, you would still have a job and just to have more time in your life for things that are important to you, spiritual time, family time, time to work out, et cetera. So it could be an opportunity is all I'm trying to get at.
Time to spend with your cats.
Cats, kids, grandkids?
Cat show. Brenda, Brenda's cat is giving yours a run for your money, Rita. Let's continue, please, with rounding up questions and comments, Director Brimmedwards. Do you have any remaining thoughts?
Yeah, I think, and I want to thank the staff for answering all the questions that I posed. I really appreciate that. This is a very truncated process, and so we haven't had a lot of opportunity to have public discussion or ask questions. So thank you. So I guess it just, my thoughts just on the general budget, I'm obviously going to be supportive of the approval vote. It's been a really tumultuous year. I think nobody could have predicted that we'd have a pandemic and precedent unemployment and economic recession. And then also a moment which we must address, the racial inequity in our country. And I think in a year like that, most people would say, like, this is going to be a business-as-usual budget or we've just got to get by, like, manage our way through it. And I think I'm really proud of the district because we didn't do that. Because I think that would have been the easy thing to do, but instead using the reimagine PPS vision, our racial equity agenda, emergent strat plan, really focusing on the success of our students. So I want to just applaud the district staff of not taking the easy route. And it was all very compressed. I also want to just recognize the Portland community because, as was noted earlier in the CBRC presentation, this community voluntarily adds an additional tax onto their regular tax burden to the tune of $100 million in our local option. And as CBRC noted, that was 890 teachers. So thank you, the Portland voters. If we didn't have that 100 million, this would be a super painful meeting tonight. Also, the new business tax that, you know, pre-COVID, and I think we'll eventually get back there. We had the largest new business tax in probably the last 50 years. It should be over $1 billion for education. And it will come back. So while we're getting less than we thought, I think we should recognize that we're, we're on a path to a three-legged school and a, and a better, a better funding model. I also want to just maybe go back to the comment that Director Moore stated about the, about COVID and the expenses. Right now, based on the questions and answers we had, there's about 1.8 billion, 8 million, sorry, dollars for, so COVID-related expenses. And the complexity of reopening this fall, I don't think can be understated. And just this evening, while we were sitting in this meeting, the governor announced that she's pausing any counties going into their next phase because of the uptick, a pretty significant acceleration of phases in Oregon. And this is actually true across the country. So the ODE guidance, if you read it, I think will give anybody a true understanding of how hard this is going to be. So we're heading into a really, really difficult time period. And I think we should, you know, still get a strategy that, around what Director Scott suggested with the city, but also dial up our federal advocacy because the expense, the expense to run a school system in a hybrid, a regular or a distance learning is going to be more than our regular state. And I think that it's also going to be even more important than ever. Just back to the individuals who provided public comments tonight, it's going to be more important than ever if we're in a hybrid or a distance learning model, that we have community partners that can reach and support all of our families, especially those that don't have the privilege of having fast internet, parents that can, you know, that are available to, like, start up the, the lesson during a particular time. And so I think we really have to be mindful of what the cost is going to, the additional cost is going to be to deliver an equitable model of whatever that may be. And it's probably going to switch, my guess, we'll go through all different, all of the three stages at some point next time, from distance learning to hybrid to the regular, hopefully to regular. So I guess, I guess I want to just put a sort of fine point on that is to me a potential huge category that we don't have enough money set aside to address. And the last, the last item, it's already been discussed that between now and the budget adoption of the special session, I'm sure there's going to be conversations about administrative pay and what may be viewed by others as discretionary expenses. That that's just going to be part of it, and we may just be told what we're going to be doing. So I think that's something to keep our eye on. And then the last piece is the Secretary of State's audit had some budget recommendations. And I haven't had time to just go back and make sure that we've addressed them all. So that would be my last thing, but I just want to guess, include by thanking staff for producing a budget that aligns against our priorities and vision. And we're going to need to be nimble to respond to COVID, the state's economy. And we'll also probably continue to be strong advocates during the legislative session. continue to be strong advocates during the legislative session with the federal delegation and locals as well.
Thank you. Scott?
Thank you. I'll try and be quick because it's late. A few things to follow up on. One, I want to second Director DePass's suggestion about, you know, the mayor taking a pay cut. I'm thinking the chair, the vice chair, and the entire board absolutely frees our pay and potentially reduces it to zero, so.
Ouch!
All in favor of doing that?
Second?
Yeah.
I'm willing to go some pay.
Yeah. I think we are. You know, I want to thank staff, I think that this, you know, we're in the middle, I've said it before, and it's a weird, but the pandemic hit at one of the worst times for budgeting possible, and, you know, thank goodness the state has a biennial budget, and they happen to be in the second year of it, because it would just be a total chaos right now if the state was having to budget in this time period, but local governments and school districts do. And I just want to thank the staff for, in the midst of a whole set of unknowns, putting together a budget and then a plan for how we get to next year that I think really makes sense. I also want to thank them, the staff, for working really hard to answer all of Director Brim Edwards' questions. I'm kidding, truly.
I think you had three.
Only partially. I did have a few myself, but they were, no, there was a lot of really important information that we got. And what I really want to thank staff is sort of responding to, you know, community concerns and parent concerns over the last few days around PE and adaptive PE in particular, and finding some of those additional offsets to restore that. I do want to stress, and I'm sure we've lost, I hope we've lost all of the parents off the call, because it's already 10:40, but those things aren't costless, and while I really support the decisions to make those changes, that is also, and I think the changes we made, I think those, saving those programs for now makes more sense, but that's also flexibility that is no longer in our budget. And so things that could have been used to pay for coronavirus expenses, or additional unexpected things, or additional programming, or just offset future cuts, we've now used that. And that sort of transitions me into, I've been thinking about how to say this in a way that is even remotely politically astute, so I don't think I'm going to do it. You know, the 400-plus emails that I received over the last two days, all of which are heartfelt, I got very few form emails. Almost everything I got was personally written, emotionally invested. I mean, these are, you know, parents who really care about their kids and the district and the education that they're getting, but what it made me realize is the lack of understanding of what we're in for over the next few years. And the reality is that saving, you know, sort of PE in the elementary schools, saving the adaptive PE, that's great, but sort of how do we reorient our entire community for this three-to-four-year ride that we're in? And it's going to be unpleasant, but it doesn't necessarily have to be all negative. And if everyone sort of accepts where we are and works collaboratively to figure out, how do we really come together as a community and as a district to figure out the best way to get through this and preserve the things we have, I actually think we'll have some success.
You're here. Looks like you just faded away, but I think you were done. If you weren't, we can come back to you. That was a hasty exit. Director Lowry?
I just want to, again, thank staff, and I think, you know, to take what could have been a $57 million shortfall and work that down to 12, and then, you know, to be responsive to our community when we did get those, you know, overwhelming number of emails from PE folks, to listen to that as leadership and to adjust to the expressed needs of the community, I think is a huge amount of work. I am deeply troubled by the fact that a lot of that has been done in cost of living increases not happening. I know how much our senior staff has worked, I know how much you already all have sacrificed with the furloughs you have done, I know that many of you have taken those furlough days and held those with good boundaries, and I know that many of you have not been able to do that simply because of the, not just the pandemic, but wanting to be responsive to the unrest that's happening and the protests and the huge need in this moment to be leaders for racial justice and equity. And so I'm worried that we're going to lose some of you. I'm worried that some of remarkable leaders who are forecasting this incredible, are going to burn out and be tired, and that if we continue to ask you to sacrifice in such ways, that that's going to have a cost that ultimately will cause suffering for our students. So I just, I wanted to shout out the incredible listening work I got to be part of, two listening sessions, got to watch the other two that staff put together. Thank you, Jonathan, and your team for pulling all that together so quickly. Again, thanks, everybody, for being responsive to the outcry for the community about PE. And, you know, again, I think this is going to be a long-term, we are going to have substantially more cuts, and I am concerned, I know we're joking about Guadalupe, you know, following suit with the mayor, but I am concerned about this perception that we can take from our management and take from our administration, and like Andrew said, Director Scott said earlier in the night, that all of that communication, all of this sort of goal-setting, that vital work, we need to support that so it can continue to happen, because that will ultimately have huge impacts on our students. I wrote some notes here, so I'd be more organized with my thoughts, and it's so not helping. I do also want to say that I loved what Marcus Monday had to say and his great wisdom that he shared, and I'm hearing from people all around the district that have been around PPS for a long time, that it feels a little different. You know, like, people are still waiting to see, like, what Director Moore said about, can we turn those pretty words into practical lived-out reality? Well, what I'm hearing from constituents in the community, and what I'm seeing, just having been around PPS for the few years I've been here, is that something is different, that we are making change, we are making a difference, we are going in a new direction. It's going to take a lot of work to get there, and I just so thank the staff for your adaptability, your resilience, your incredibly hard work on all of this. And I know, you know, it's in vogue to say, well, just take it out of admin, but we really need to be clear about what are we fighting for, what are we changing, and how do we get there in the best strategic way possible? And thank you for the amazing work you all did with the budget presentation that helped us really focus in on what our priorities are and who we are going to be as PPS. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lowry. Rita?
So, yeah, I would, I'll try to keep it brief, because I agree with most of what Sun said already. You know, I think this budget is a remarkable document, and I'm deeply grateful for the imagination and the creativity and the innovations that went into making it possible to survive this precipitous shortfall relatively unscathed, and even, and still managed to make investments. I'm especially grateful that we have a strategic plan and a vision and an administration that I think knows what needs to be done and knows how to do it. And I think that's going to make weathering this economic storm much easier than it would have been, you know, if this had happened five years ago. And, you know, I'm, well, as you could tell from my earlier comments, I think we have a moment here. I am, I would not have wished for a deficit. I think we could have made amazing progress if we actually had the, if we actually got the money that we budgeted for. But nevertheless, I also believe in the trite phrase, never let a crisis go to waste. And I think there are, I think we have a moment to galvanize support for some real progress in areas that might otherwise, under different circumstances, have encountered some resistance. So I think it's probably only a moment, so I'm hoping that we seize this opportunity to really make some progress on things that we, that this district has talked about for a very long time. Anyway, thank you.
Appreciate that. I really want to echo what everyone said, just add a few comments. My most fundamental gratitude is that we are incredibly fortunate that we have this team in place at this time, both to deal with the transition, with closing our schools and going to a form of remote learning. It was so quick, it was so capable, it wasn't perfect, it's full of challenges, as next year will be too, but to see the team put all of that in place with our kids at the center so quickly was just incredible. And then to see this budget proposal that, first of all, dug us three-quarters of the way out of our hole before we even had to start looking at cuts to the general fund is pretty amazing. So there was great creativity and resourcefulness that was shown there. And just to, you know, go back to our efforts over the last 18 months on really improving our governance, the fact that we have board goals in place, the fact that we have our community-driven vision in place, the fact that we have a strategic planning process that is well underway, the fact that we have a really clearly articulated racial equity and social justice framework that we're staking our decisions on, makes all the difference in the world, I have to say. I have been in this position of making budget decisions in the absence of those. And Superintendent Guerrero, you refer frequently to the lack of systems that you discovered when you stepped into this place, but we've made just tremendous progress in that way, and it makes the tough decisions so much easier, because we know what we care about and how we're going to prioritize things. So to me, that's what's most important here, and we'll follow that through in the years to come. I do, I do think it was interesting to hear the comments from a couple of the people in public testimony, that regardless of what our community often says about a commitment to racial equity and social justice, it's hard for people to deviate from the status quo and what they have expected in their institutions and what they've expected to see in their school buildings. So we need to really keep engaging our community about why it's important to stay true to those values, even when we have to make significant changes to the status quo. And I think that's it. Director Scott, you dropped off precipitously, I think you lost your internet, and I'm not sure if you were done with your comments, so would you like to close?
Man, I had like, I went five minutes, it was the best speech I've ever given. No, I'll just wrap up. I'm not sure where I left off, but thank you to the staff for all the work they did. I think it's a great budget. I said my comments earlier about central administration and being very cautious there, so I'm going to keep an eye on that as we go forward. But I really appreciate the racial equity focus in the budget and the attention to our goals. And I'm not looking forward to, you know, moving forward with the reductions when we get the final numbers and what goes on next year, but I'm confident in this team that we're going to do the job.
Final word, Maxine? Okay, all right.
Can you talk, it's so late? Let's move on.
I appreciate the staff.
Yay!
That's my final comment. Let's vote.
Let's vote.
And I can go to sleep, maybe?
And the rest of us, too. The board will now vote on Resolution Number 6129, Budget Committee Approval of the 2020-2021 Budget and the Imposition of Property Taxes. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 6129 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
Okay, we still have two more items, which I hope we can give their due in the next nine minutes. The first is the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Master Plan, which the School Improvement Bond Committee has been considering. Director Scott, would you like to introduce this item?
Yes, so I, and hopefully the Internet will go out again, in June of 2019, the Board approved the addition of Alliance at Meek programming to the Multiple Pathways to Graduation building on the Benson campus, and the proposed master plan for a new Multiple Pathways to Graduation High School is the culmination of approximately a year of planning and design work by district and MPG leadership, students, staff, and stakeholders. Earlier last month, I guess, on the 7th, the School Improvement Bond Committee, we reviewed this as a committee, unanimously recommended the master plan be forwarded to the Board for approval, and that is what you have in front of you tonight.
All right, the Board will now vote on Resolution Number 6128, Authorizing Multiple Pathways to Graduation Master Plan. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director DePass seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 6128. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment? Okay, thank you. Do we have board discussion on this resolution?
So the only thing I want to add is, I've served on the Design Advisory Group, and I think back to that when we were sitting in Mazama, the previous Board, and this discussion was, why can't we put Alliance at Meek and Alliance at Benson together with these other programs? They're all about giving students multiple pathways to graduation, and it seemed like a pretty radical idea at the time. And I want to say that I love seeing the spirit of all the programs and staff and leaders come together and really look at their sort of common mission and design a building that I think is going to do a great job of providing really a customized environment for these students, and students, again, in a case in which they felt the disrepair of their building, or that they were shutted off to sort of the back corner of a building, that their placement and their facility reflected what the district thought of them and how they prioritize them, and I think this building structure will send those students a very different message. Staff's done a great job at sort of capturing the vision and just, you know, I want to thank Senior Director Wolf and Warner Smith, past Buffalo, for their leadership in the process, because we're on the path to having a great building for students who really deserve it.
Thank you for hanging with us, Karina, and I very much look forward to talking with the voters and advocating for why this is so important for our students as we move forward with the bond. It's really, really exciting. The Board will now vote on Resolution 6128, Authorizing Multiple Pathways to Graduation Master Plan. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 6128 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Lateral voting.
Yes.
All right, Max, we're getting close to the end, but you can drop off at any time. You can pull an Andrew.
No, I'm not going to pull an Andrew, because search and seizure is important.
Okay, that's a great lead in. Director Moore, can you update us on what we're looking at from the Policy Committee?
Yes, and I'll talk relatively quickly. So this is the second first reading of the search and seizure policy. We had, we had had a first reading in, I believe, the fall, and then, and thanks to interventions from Maxine and other students, the committee took it back and we started to do a pretty, pretty significant outreach effort to talk with students and families, stakeholders, to kind of reassess the whole search and seizure policy. whole search and seizure policy. Um, the original policy, um, had not been updated since 2002 and it didn't fully reflect the district's vision of the educational experience we want to provide to students. Embedded in this policy revision are, um, significant protections for students primarily in the requirement that parents and guardians, um, must be given notice and give consent prior to student interviews by law enforcement. Uh, the policy also contains a definition section that will, um, explain some of the legal lingo that's important in this, in this area. And the policy now requires the district to track all searches conducted on district property. Um, the updates continue the district's goal of protecting students' rights while also providing for the safety of all students and the general counsel's office. So, um, I could go on, but I think I'll spare everybody. So the policy amendments will be posted on the board website and the public comment period is 21 days, with the last day to comment being July 2nd. The board will hold a second reading at the July 14th meeting.
Thank you so much, um, Maxine. Thank you for orchestrating, uh, a lot of student input, really meaningful and important student input on this. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm just really glad that I had the experience this year to work on search and seizure. It wasn't really something I was expecting to work on, but, um, through this work on this policy, um, I've, I've really enjoyed learning about policy work, um, surprisingly, even though it's been really hard and long and part of me was really hoping that this policy would be passed before I left. It's fine that it's not, really still excited that it's, it, it, all the work on it has been done this year and that we've had, um, such great student engagement and such great outreach done by, um, the engagement team, which I'm really grateful for. So I'm just, I'm just glad that we were able to not rush this process and get all of the, um, input that we needed from students who this policy would be affecting the most.
I think this was, um, a great example of, um, how we want to really integrate student feedback into our student direction and leadership into our policymaking process moving forward. Um, super, super important. So we look forward to, um, finalizing that, uh, in a few weeks. Thank you, Maxine. Thank you, Rita. Thank you, Policy Committee. Thank you, staff. Okay. Lastly, do we have any, um, committee reports that anyone wants to bring forward? From the policy committee?
Oh, sorry. Um, I, I don't, somebody's having, I don't know whether you or me having internet issues. Um, no, I think, um, that the policy committee is continuing to crank through some things. Um, and, uh, we, we finally started to tackle some of the general revisions of the, you know, sort of full portfolio of policies with the help of OSBA. So, um, a lot of that's going to be happening over the summer, I think. So anyway, um, I think that's all I've got.
So I have, um, I guess I don't have to do the multiple pathways to graduation DAG because we, we just, uh, had a vote on the project. Um, the other DAG that I'm serving on is the, the one for the new Kellogg Middle School. And, um, I guess the, the short update is, you know, on time, on budget, looks great. I'm going to circulate some, uh, photos so people can see the progress that's been made. Um, and shortly, a boundary is going to have to be drawn so that, um, planning can start for next year. Um, but from a building standpoint, um, it's progressing within budget and it looks like it's going to be a great learning environment and the perfect place for that newly designed middle school curriculum and program to go.
That's fantastic. All right.
Yes, um, so I've been writing heard on the Benson process. Um, the design work is moving right along. Uh, they're still dancing and then I don't know if that, have they met with the historical, um, landmark folks yet? Worked through that, uh, worked through some issues, but it looks like, um, that's having a happy ending. They've had to make some budget adjustments. So, uh, if you recall a meeting a couple of months ago, pre-COVID, you know, it's like VC, um, we talked about, uh, emergency shelter, um, as part of the plan. Uh, due to budget considerations, some of that space had to be cut back, but the, I believe the gym will still be, uh, built to that maximum strength, uh, for an emergency shelter. Um, and Dan or Marina can correct me if, uh, I missed anything.
All right. Thanks, board, for, um, keeping connected to those design advisory groups. All right, I believe we have concluded. Again, just want to recognize the superintendent, um, for your leadership on this, um, remarkable budget process and this budget, which is, um, an artifact now to our vision and to your leadership and to the phenomenal senior team that you have assembled, who, um, poured so much of their heart and soul into this effort and articulating our strategies and priorities. So, um, thank you all. Uh, tomorrow's Friday, so that means you get to sleep in. And with that, this meeting of the Board of Education is adjourned. Take care, everybody.